We will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Ms. Galante, will you please allow us to embarrass you on your last board meeting?
Mr. Domann.
So it is Ms. Galante's last meeting after 21 years in the district. So we just wanted to thank you for all of your years of service and tolerating us, and thank you for everything that you've done. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Very nice. I just want to say this is my 425th board meeting. And I've worked with 31 school board members over the years, which isn't real unusual for 21 years doing this. But what is unusual in this district is that I've only worked, besides one year of a co-interim superintendent, I've only worked for two superintendents, Dr. Slaughterback and for 13 years with Dr. Erdl. And that's really unusual in school districts at this point. So I just wanted to say that, thank you for your dedication to the district and all of you and staff and administration who have been great. It's been a great ride. Thank you. And welcome to Mary Goodlie.
And welcome to Ms. Newman.
Thank you.
Job shadowing. All right, now we can call the roll.
Mr. Domann?
Here.
Ms. Fraley?
Here.
Dr. Joseph Banger?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Milfeld?
Excused?
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rollin?
Here. All right. I will move into public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved by Mr. Meyer.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Joseph Banger. Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we can call the roll.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Dr. Joseph Banger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes. Consent agenda passes, and we'll move on to the first action item tonight, which is the 2018-2019 proposed budget approval. Mr. Phillips, would you like to read this one?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is recommended that the School Board approve the attached proposed 2018-19 budget. Fund expenditures are summarized as follows. General Fund 10, $79,656,678. Donation Fund 21, $90,500. Special Education Fund 27, $12,691,199. Capital Expansion Fund 41, $5,008. Food Services Fund 50, $1,848,592. Recreation Department Fund 80, $2,388,413. Total expenditures, all funds, $101,783,382, less inter-fund operating transfer from Fund 10 of $8,143,191, for a net total expenditures of all funds, $93,640,191. The 2018-19 budget will be adjusted in October, once final enrollment, state aid, and state revenue cap figures are available. The tax levy will be set at that time, and I so move.
Moved by our Treasurer, Mr. Phillips. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Meyer. Would you like to... I can just say, so in the past meeting, we had a pretty robust discussion and presentation from Mr. Mack and others on the budget, but just this is an opportunity for Board members to share anything in addition. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Mr. Meyer.
Just a thank you to Mr. Mack again for the extraordinary work that he does.
Any other Board question or comment on the item? Any... Oh, Ms. Fraley.
I would second that for Mr. Mack, who I think works incredibly hard. I do just want to comment for the public, for whom you might not have spent as much time as we have going through the budget. It's a very complex process, and I just want to sort of like admit that prior to coming on the Board, I really thought that there was going to be like money that we could move, and that there was going to be these opportunities, because our budget is far from perfect. We do the best with what we have in incredibly creative ways, and that is to be lauded. But I just want to say publicly that the budget process through the state does not behoove us to do everything that I think as a school district we need to be doing. And that is on us, I think, to think about the Legislative Advocacy Committee, and how we, as a district, and as a Board, and you as constituents, start to hold the state accountable too for the predicament that we are in, given how funding works in a district like ours, where we have to deal with negative tertiary aid, which is a really complex way of saying that just because we would increase taxes doesn't mean that we'd get more money. We'd actually lose state aid. So it's a very complex process, and while the budget is not everything that I would hope for, I have a deep respect for district officials, our Treasurer, Mr. Mack, Mr. Hubble, who answers all of my questions when I say, "Why can't we do this? Like, can't we move money from there?" But to also just let you know that there are things that we can do to push the state to change the funding process, because that is truly what, in my opinion, holds us back from doing some of the things that ideally we would be doing to meet our students' needs.
Thank you very much.
Any additional Board question or comment? I would just echo and say thank you to Mr. Meyer, Dr. Erdl, and everybody else that has a... plays a role in the budget. There's a lot of good things in this budget, and I'm optimistic that they will use the funds responsibly and effectively in the year to come. Is there any public comment on the budget? Seeing none, we can call the roll.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Dr. Joseph Banger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes. Motion passes, and we move on to the Facilities Advisory Recommendation. Would you like to introduce our guests?
Yes. I'm not going to get into a lot of the history of the process, but I will say that this Facilities Advisory Committee started in February of 2017 with a number of community members, and we have two people that have led that process, two community members, Ben Lamachia and Lisa Lawless, and they're going to share, after many months of work and effort that the committee put together, a recommendation to give to the Board, and they're going to present that now.
I started my clock so we don't go over in our allotted time. I understand we have 30 minutes, so we'll try to get in under that. We'll see what we can do. I'm Lisa Lawless, and this is Ben Lamachia. We're the co-chairs of the Facilities Advisory Committee. To begin with, we are the Facilities Advisory Committee, and we'll mention how that was started briefly. We'll also talk about our process and study, what we've been doing for the last 17 months, what we've been studying and looking at. We'll get into our key findings about the facilities of the school district. Not last, but not least, most important, we'll give you our recommendations for addressing the needs of the facilities of the school district. And if time permits, we'll discuss the community survey results a little bit. I know the Board heard about the results of the community survey at the June 11 meeting. We began our process, and we are always acting with the mission of the school district in mind, and it's always good to return to the mission. It is, as you all probably know better than I, we do, that it's united with parents and the community. The Wauwatosa School District delivers an outstanding education that equips and inspires our students to conquer their challenges now and in the future. And as we... we believe that our study and the recommendations we make will serve the strategic objectives of the school district, which they're right here, and we'll mention them later in our presentation. But part of those strategic objectives and strategic plan, I know, in the sound stewardship of resources, was for the school district to conduct a study of the facilities and classroom space of the school district. And that was conducted, and the comprehensive facilities assessment was delivered in December 2016, which is a couple notebooks full over here, addressing the different buildings of the school district. And all of these different players were involved in putting the data together to study the facilities. So we began with a head start with all of that information for the Facilities Advisory Committee. Here's a picture of the front page of the facilities assessment, and it's available online as well on the school district's website. That facilities assessment showed you all that there was over $153 million in mechanical, electrical, and plumbing needs at all the schools. And given the magnitude of that amount of money involved in the needs of the buildings, this prompted the district to stop and consider what to do next, how best to move forward. And the thought was that community input would be needed for addressing the facilities' needs of the school district. And that prompted the creation of the Facilities Advisory Committee. The invitations to volunteer for it were sent out in January 2017. We were told that, "Congratulations, you're a member of the committee." Yay! Around then, or February 2017, we had our first meeting in February 2017. The FAC was open to community members, parents, teachers, administrators, business persons. We have all those people on our committee, and they were active members of the committee. We have... very, very important to our process over the last 17 months has been the resources that we've had as a committee. The school district administration and staff, the architect, Plunkett Reyes Architects, PRA, from here forward, the construction manager, VJS Construction Services. We got information from the financial advisor, Robert W. Baird, about school finance, and I still don't understand it after, you know, two hours. The survey administrator was school perceptions, as you heard a couple weeks ago. And I would ask that any members of the Facilities Advisory Committee stand up. We spent 17 months of work and diligent effort, and I'm thinking about the buildings of our school district, and it's been an interesting and fulfilling time, and everyone's worked really hard, so...
Can you say that?
People aren't standing up! Can you... And if you're a member of the resource team, you should stand up too. To wrap up this phase of our presentation, the charge of the FAC was to review, assess, and prioritize identified facilities' needs throughout the district. And as a result of our findings, we were to brainstorm and evaluate potential remodeling and construction solutions for further investigation and broader community review, routinely communicating and reporting updates to the School Board. The final product of our work is to present a final report summarizing our findings and make a recommendation to the School Board, and that's why we're here tonight. Ben?
So taking over from Lisa, I'm Ben Lamachia. I'm co-chair of the Facilities Advisory Committee. I'm going to walk you through a little bit of our process and how we got to where we are today. We have had a total of 26 meetings, which include the workshops, so we've been meeting now for 16 going on 17 months, and have had a very productive time and have learned much about the existing facilities, and really where we would like to go, and using that information and combining it with what we learned through the community input that we gathered. So starting way back in February of 2017, we're just going to kind of walk you through the timeframe and what we learned. We had a kickoff meeting and began studying the existing conditions report, and Lisa had mentioned the very thick, black binder that we received. It was full of information. I did read it from cover to cover and learned an awful lot about the existing conditions that needed to be addressed. So we met about that book in particular, reviewed the existing conditions report. So again, what we're doing is creating a base of information and understanding of what's going on at the facilities within the district. And moving into March, we followed that up with a tour of all school buildings, so we had five different meeting dates, and all the FAC members had an opportunity to now take the information that they reviewed in the report and take a look at the existing facilities. So moving into April of 2017 now, that we have an understanding of the facilities, let's learn about modern learning environments. So we spent probably the better part of three hours just learning about different furniture systems, technology, integration into the classroom. I don't come from an educational background, so it was very informative to learn about some of the new things that are happening that might be able to be integrated into a modern learning environment. Moving into May, we're getting a better understanding now, going back on the history of emergency repairs at the facilities. So we got a good presentation from Melissa Nettisham and Kurt regarding the performance benchmarking at the facilities, so getting an understanding of the cost of maintaining these facilities and how that's been affected by their existing conditions. Moving forward into June now, understanding of the facilities, we got results of a staff survey. So the important part of this is, what's the experience of the people inside the building and how they're using it for learning? We're able to garner these pieces of information and use those as we move forward. Getting school finance, Lisa commented, you know, "I don't think we have a full understanding of the bond system, but I think we have a good understanding on what it does at the household level and, you know, how that impact looks." Going through the summer, in August, we discussed and formulated the features of a model school. So what we've done now, understanding the existing conditions, understanding some of the modern learning environments, what would an ideal school look like? So if we're planning on meeting a certain criteria, we have to really create that criteria. So we had a lot of discussion around what this would look like, a number of bullet points here on what we would do if we were to build a new school, more or less. And what this also allowed us to do is get an understanding of equity, and equity was a really important theme that we've carried throughout all of our meetings, and that is doing the very best job that we could to create equity across the district amongst all elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. What does that look like? So, understanding what it looks like, now how does it fit in? Because we have 14 different facilities, understanding that just starting from new with 14 different facilities probably isn't reasonable, so we need to get an understanding of how this idea of equity and idea of a model school would fit into our existing facilities. So we reviewed the features of the model school, and then the options for addressing the facility's needs with this. And what we did is we created preliminary options. You'll see that we went through a variety of different options, starting with maintenance-only, which goes back to the report that Lisa referenced earlier, which is really just digging into the MEPs, which is mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural issues, not really improving the learning environment, just addressing deferred maintenance issues, and then moving all the way into option five, which is addressing all new needs that we had identified and upgrading them as a single package. So really what we're doing now is kind of creating a menu of options to get us from just addressing deferred maintenance and surviving to having an optimal learning environment. So now that we have a really good understanding of what's going on, we spend the better portion of early fall getting ready for community workshops, and this really had to do with refining options for addressing these needs and prioritizing these options into a format that we could present to the community to help them better understand what we were studying at the time. So we're gearing up for the community workshops in September. Again, a lot of really good thought, a lot of good discussion around all the points that we had spent, you know, that we had gathered over the previous six months, and more or less came up with a prioritization. So you can see we have a... there is a lot more to this, too. A lot of whiteboard discussion, a lot of different diagrams that the school district and the consultants helped us compile. But as you can see, we've created more or less a hierarchy of where the base needs are, going all the way up to some of the other needs that we had identified in our discussions up to that point. Moving to the next slide, eventually creating this preliminary long-range master plan. Again, what would it look like if we addressed all the needs, being at the top of the pyramid, going all the way down to the base of the pyramid, which is really, again, a lot of those deferred maintenance items, you know, maybe some minor modifications as they relate to security, as they relate to ADA, some of the core things that we really wanted to affect. What would that look like on a dollar amount? Because we can talk a lot about concept, but until you understand what the concept, how that merges with the dollar amounts, it's really hard to take a step forward. So what we tried to do is really more or less monetize those needs so that we could present that at our community meetings. So moving into October, preparation for the community workshops, and Lisa's going to talk a little bit about those.
We had six community workshops in October 2017. One of them was at the Senior Center. There was one with high school and middle school students. Over 130 community members attended the community workshops. They were held throughout the district. Invitations went out to all residents through various methods of communication to invite them to attend. We had good attendance at these workshops. Various players spoke, talked about the current state of the buildings based on the facilities' assessment. We talked about our preliminary identification of options and needs of the facilities. We explained that to the attendees, and the attendees brainstormed themselves after hearing all that information to identify what they thought the priorities of the school district should be with respect to facilities. And in asking them to do that, the school district collected the information from people to make sure the community workshops really got the input and went away with it. And the attendees of the workshops, after hearing all the information presented, rated it as the highest priority, focusing on the modern learning spaces and technology and classroom upgrades. That was number one, most important, as well as ADA accessibility, get at more accessible buildings. Also important to attendees was climate control and energy efficiency in our buildings, and safety and security was another factor that was very important to attendees. And all of the other things that people raised are also listed on this. Listed last is pool replacement, so that didn't come in high as an important priority, at least at this time. And I'll turn it back over to Ben.
So exactly what Lisa was talking about, I think another point we'd like to really emphasize is the amount of transparency that we've had throughout this entire process and the efforts that have been made to make sure that the community was aware of what we were doing and had every opportunity to learn about it and engage and provide us feedback. So after we were able to get some of the feedback, December, we reviewed the results of the workshops and discussed and considered the sample model elementary school design development and lifecycle costing. So really, if you were to take a closer look at these two diagrams right here, we're getting an understanding of really what that payback is for renovation versus new build. And this is really a critical thing that we had to explore, because again, we're talking about 14 different facilities, having an understanding that there are going to be limitations as to the potential spend. We wanted to prepare ourselves and get an understanding of where's the best value-added componentry that we can give to these facilities to make the best use of the taxpayer money as we move forward, accomplishing not only the deferred maintenance, but also improved learning environments, ADA, security, the other issues that Lisa had just mentioned on the previous slide. So, taking all this information that we've been gathering now over almost the past year, we took it to the next level, and we started reviewing and discussing the proposed elementary school through a project at McKinley Elementary School. And the reason why we focused on McKinley is based on the report that we had reviewed and our own walkthrough. We figured that it was one of the schools of a higher need, so we felt that it was a good model school to take this approach on. So we took a look at really kind of two different scenarios with this, one either a heavy renovation or the other being a new build on that site. So we continue with our study of this concept later on in January, and we went through some, basically some pricing models of a new build versus a proposed renovation, and some of the pluses and minuses of those two different approaches. And really what became evident at this point is that when you reach a certain amount of deferred maintenance of spaces that are obsolete, you get to a point of reduced payback, where the multi-phased approach of doing a renovation in a school that has such an amount of need is very disruptive to the students. So we were really looking at either doing a phased remodel that may have lasted upwards of two years versus if we looked at a new build, for a very comparable cost, you're going to get a brand-new building, but it's going to take about half the time, and you can leave the existing building standing while you potentially build a new building. So this is really the level of detail that we talked about to get to the point that we're at today. So from there, we were able to better prioritize some of the facility needs throughout the district. And moving into February, we then took that information and reviewed some of the parent and elementary staff survey results. So again, it's that, as I mentioned earlier, that continuance of the transparency of community feedback, getting a higher level of understanding for not only what staff members are looking for, but also parents, so that we could take that to the next level as we continued with our work. Moving through February, we continued to discuss the community survey and really got ourselves prepared for the survey that went out to the entire community this April and
This slide shows all the different methods of communication the school district used to keep the community and parents and all the stakeholders informed of what was going on with the FAC, through the website, the FAC spot on the website, through the school district monthly newsletter, through the community workshops I talked about, through the community newsletter, the school reporter, through the Senior Center newsletter as well, presentations to all staff at all buildings, presentation to the Common Council. Ben and I presented to the Common Council and Dr. Erdl to talk to the Common Council about what we're looking into. Presentation to the PTO Council, media coverage on newspaper and TV, and Facebook posts. So through all of that, those different sources of information, over the last many months, the school district has kept the community informed of what we're doing. So anybody interested in this should know where to come and how to give input. And we saw some posts on Facebook and other social media sites with people interested in what we're doing, and information was exchanged with the community, and a free exchange of information to address people's concerns and answer questions and provide the facts of where we were at a particular time. One of the pieces of information the school district gave to the community and attendees of the workshops was some key facts about our buildings and our school district. The average age of the buildings, average age, is 73.5 years, and that's probably gone up since our workshops in October, since it's been many months since October.
74.
Yeah, 74 and a half, maybe. Lincoln was built in 1919, for example. Five of the schools have their original boilers running in their buildings. They range in age from 50 to 62 years. And we saw from our tours and from hearing from Melissa Nettisham and others in the school district how awesome they are at maintaining the boilers and all the other aspects of the buildings. Great care has been taken of these buildings to keep them going, keep them productive, and make these... parts of these buildings last a lot longer than they ever were intended to. And Ben will mention that in a couple minutes. Many of the buildings are not air-conditioned, and that's one fun fact, I guess, not so fun for kids, students and teachers perhaps, but... And many of the buildings aren't truly accessible in all parts by today's standards for parents, community members, and students who need to use the building. So that's of major concern. Some of our key findings in looking at all this information is that we have... the school district has aging facilities with very significant MEP needs, that's mechanical, electrical, plumbing. Safety and security is a high priority in the buildings, and to bring the buildings up to the most optimal safety and security, modifications would need to be made, for example, getting into the buildings, and that's... For example, getting into the buildings, and that's part of our recommendations tonight. An important goal of the school buildings is that they be accessible to all students, parents, staff, and community members. And so that's a challenge of our old buildings. Community access to the buildings is important as well, because the pools, for example, and the gyms of some of these buildings are used by the community. The, and the final, but not, last but not least, is that education has changed since these buildings were built in the 73 years ago. Modern learning environments are quite different now than they were even when I was in school, or my grandparents, my parents were in school, or my grandparents were in school. Some of the key findings we looked at, and we're not going to belabor these, but these are here for your reference for when you are looking at this, is that the mechanical and electrical systems are significantly beyond their expected lifespan. The systems, because they're so dated, are inefficient. There's limited controls resulting in poor temperature and regulation and poor air quality in some of the buildings. And the power is insufficient for the modern digital age. The building exteriors also need attention. The windows are, in many of the buildings, are single-pane. The masonry walls, the beautiful brick buildings we have, some need repair. Doors need to be replaced, and some asphalt is failing, and sidewalks may need replacement in some of the buildings. Accessibility is a key feature we looked at when we toured the buildings and something that came up in the study and something that's important to our community and to us in our study. There are some deficiencies at several of the elementary schools in the inability of, of students or parents or staff members who have, have limited access or in wheelchairs or unable to walk stairs, that they can't get up to another level of the building. So many of the schools don't have elevators, and they may have only one entrance that someone in a wheelchair could access, so that one child who had, who was terminally ill, I believe at McKinley or some other school, to get from one part of the building to another had to go outside and go around to get into the building. There's concerns, of course, about getting into the bathrooms and limited elevator access. Now, Ben?
Moving into the facilities maintenance plan, if you focus your attention to the graph that we have, I think it pretty much speaks for itself. We have mechanical systems that are well-passed, their expected useful life, and I think, again, that's a testament to the district and the work that they've done in maintaining this equipment. In many cases, it's more than two times its useful life. So we have a situation here that if it isn't addressed in some way, is going to continue to give diminishing returns. And just, you know, again, it's going back to, to financial stewardship is another, one of the goals of our committee, is, you know, are you really being a good steward of taxpayer money when you keep spending more and more money on emergency fixes that end up costing more money in the end? So some of the key findings that we had were that, obviously, the maintenance needs are significant, that the school district has been very proactive with prioritizing and maintaining facilities and sites within a very limited budget. Most facilities, while generally in working order, have major systems that have significantly exceeded their expected useful life and will require significant investment to replace, so this investment is going to have to be made one way or the other. Accessibility is also a significant issue in several elementary school buildings and kind of, you know, I guess, continuing off of Lisa's point, you know, I think one of the questions that the school board has to ask itself is what, you know, what kind of school district do we want to be? What kind of community are we? And what's the value that we place on providing equal access and fair access to people with disabilities? And the total estimated cost as of December 2016, when the original study was done, was $153 million to address all items identified in the facilities assessment. I will say that that was just for deferred maintenance items and structural items. That was not addressing modern learning environments. So you're not really raising the bar, you're just kind of keeping things moving forward with spending that amount of money. So this is another graph that, again, I think speaks volumes. We had reviewed this graph during our community workshops, and if you take a look at it, what you can see is the orange is the facility's budget, the blue is the emergency spend on items that were unexpected. And you can see a relatively disturbing trend as you move forward in the future, that the percentage of the budget that is allocated towards emergency spending is continuing to go up.
Now we, we get to the most important part of our presentation, is our recommendations for the facilities of the school district. We begin with the core principles and rationales. We, we are, our recommendations are driven to serve the school district's mission and the strategic objectives, which include highly effective teachers and staff, continuous improvements in student learning, sound stewardship of resources, that's probably the one that we ping on the most, and the community relationships to benefit students. Our goals and the things that were driving us in coming to our recommendations and motivating us throughout the process were prudent fiscal stewardship of our buildings, to continue what the school district has done excellently over the years. We had to consider the cost-benefit of aging buildings, considering the future challenges for the buildings and needs for the buildings, and the increasing costs of operation, which that graph that Ben just pointed out shows. Over time, the buildings will be more expensive to operate if modernization doesn't occur in some of the most, buildings with the greatest need. Successful schools are key to the health, growth, and stability of our community in Wauwatosi. And it's important to note for everyone in the city of Wauwatosi, whether they have kids in the schools or not, that schools attract new residents to Wauwatosi. Many people consider the schools when deciding where to move, and it also attracts talented teachers as well. The school buildings and the facilities available would certainly be a factor in attracting an excellent teacher. The, one of the marching orders that was given to the FAC at the beginning is that the board's goal is to maintain the neighborhood schools. The schools will stay on the same sites, and as part of the earlier study, I think it was determined that the capacity of the schools is appropriate such that the schools would be needed at the locations that they are currently located at. Another factor to keep in mind is to preserve the historic character of the schools, the buildings, and considering the historic character of our city. The, another factor that we always considered and came up many times in our meetings was equity across the school district. We have 14 buildings in our school district across Wauwatosi, which is really quite a large geographic area. And it's important that our recommendations and improvements for the buildings touch all the schools as much as possible to give everybody an improved school environment. Safety and security is a very important goal for our buildings and is really a, should be a requirement, of course. Accessibility as well, as we've mentioned before, and that the buildings meet the needs of 21st century learning and modern learning environments. Oh, before I show the money slide, pun intended, our recommendation, our first money slide, our, our recommendation is based on our 17 months of study and evaluation, and based on the feedback we've gotten from the community workshops, based on the results of the community survey conducted by School Perceptions, which you all heard about two weeks ago. The School Perception survey showed that 73% of Wauwatosi residents would support the school board exploring a referendum to address the facilities' needs of the school district. And the respondents of the survey, parents and non-parents combined, would support a referendum of at least $125 million. And that's 73% of respondents. Some of the respondents would support a larger referendum, but the referendum that would be supported by the most people is $125 million. The, we, we recommend that the school board pursue a referendum of $125 million to bring all Wauwatosi school districts, school buildings up to a base-level standard on certain metrics. And those metrics are building maintenance and repairs, safety and security, HVAC air quality, flexible, modern learning. Whoops. Oh, we're going over.
Please continue.
I know, right in the middle. It's supposed to be, it's supposed, yeah. I see my time is up. I'm a, I'm a litigator that, when there's a light and you can't go, but anyway. Okay. I thought it had it on mute. That's funny. Okay. I guess it's not mute when you're trying to wake up in the morning. But flexible, modern learning environments, including upgrade of tech ed spaces and ADA accessibility. In the School Perceptions survey, the building maintenance, safety and security, and the update of tech ed and ADA accessibility were all identified as high-priority items among people responding to the survey. So the recommended points on which we would recommend bringing all school buildings up to the base-level standard fits nicely with the results of the survey that shows what the community would support in terms of the improvements to the buildings. The scope of the project for the referendum that we recommend, within the $125 million, is to build new elementary schools at McKinley and Underwood, and to build new elementary school buildings, a hybrid type of situation for Lincoln and Wilson. Hybrid meaning you retain the old historical building of Lincoln and Wilson, and you build a new building around it or next to it to bring it, to have a new-school hybrid. The, we recommend repair and replacement work at all other school buildings to bring them up to the base-level standard on the metrics that I mentioned before. The reason that McKinley and Underwood, Lincoln and Wilson are recommended to be, have new school buildings is because those are the four elementary schools that are the most in need on those metrics that we mentioned. And then, Ben?
So continuing ADA accessibility work scope, taking a look at accessible entrances and exits, accessible bathrooms, an elevator at each multi-story building, access to classrooms. And the current schools vary on this metric. It's getting back to the, the concept of equity in terms of, you know, creating a baseline of what we're trying to achieve at each facility, understanding that each facility has its own special considerations. But in particular, on this item, we had four schools that really stood out as having exceptionally high costs, and those were Lincoln, McKinley, Underwood, and Wilson. Those were the ones in the highest amount of need in terms of the dollar spend on getting those ADA changes made to those facilities. Getting into the scope on safety and security, we'd be looking to create secure entrance sequences across the district, replace exterior doors in poor condition or in wood, upgrade the PA clock system to improve communications, having interior door barricades and interior door lock consistency, and certainly identify that the elementary schools are in the highest level of need. On HVAC indoor air quality work scope, we recommend putting heating equipment, making it in sound working order, because it certainly isn't the case at, at all the facilities right now in terms of the amount of deferred maintenance. Add chilled air by use of chillers, AC units, wall units, so again, providing air conditioning across the facilities, taking care of the emergency items that continue to pile up, and again, identifying that the elementary schools have the highest level of need. Getting into flexible, modern teaching and learning spaces, the scope, we recommend every school, every room has capacity for students, that we have furniture to fit the flexibility of the space. If any of you had attended the community workshops, we had some very interesting images that showed factories from 50 years ago and factories today and other workspaces. And then we had a picture of a schoolroom from 50 years ago and a current schoolroom, and they looked identical. And this is a really important point that, you know, we would like to emphasize, is that the ability of furniture to really transform a space and, and make it modern and make it more comfortable for the students. Also, the aesthetics, the painting, the carpeting, new flooring, I mean, these are definitely very cost-effective ways to truly change the environment. Upgrading the tech ed rooms at high schools, this was something that really came out during the community survey that we'd like to note. And again, identifying Lincoln, McKinley, and Wilson as being the schools in most need on this metric. In fact, all the elementary schools are in need. Getting into the building maintenance, replacing windows that are cracking or leaking, repairing the masonry, any emergencies that we have, replacing asphalt, concrete in poor condition, replacing roofs due for replacement in the near term, two to three years. And this includes all the school buildings. In continuation of the recommendations, we recommend building four new hybrid elementary schools, building new elementary school buildings at McKinley and Underwood to replace the existing buildings. These would be footprints that are outside of the existing footprints. So again, it would allow a nice, relatively seamless transition from learning environment existing to new learning environment. Building new elementary school buildings at Lincoln and Wilson, retaining the older historic building there in terms of a hybrid approach where a portion of the building, perhaps a historical facade or some other element, might be retained, and the building would stay in the same location. These four schools have the greatest needs in the metrics of ADA safety, security, HVAC, modern learning spaces, and maintenance. The concept of equity, again, is one that we wanted to maintain throughout the entire district. It touches all school buildings, and what we really wanted to do is create a base level of standard in the areas of safety and security, ADA accessibility, HVAC, air quality, modern learning spaces, and building maintenance. So there would be recommendations in all of those categories across the entire district, with special emphasis on the elementary schools to bring them up to that same standard. The estimated total cost of these projects, including building four new or hybrid elementary schools, is just under $125 million based on the estimates that we have to date. The FAC has a couple of additional considerations. One additional consideration is, as a result of these improvements, there should be some annual savings, maybe in the realm of $1.5 million a year due to the MEP upgrades. Again, this is going to have to just be a point of emphasis on exploration on behalf of the school board. We're not really sure where that is right now, but I think we're quite certain that with these renovations, with new schools, that there will be cost savings. So what our recommendation would be is to create a capital reserve to cover those future needs. Again, there will continue to be emergencies. Is there a way for us to enjoy these savings and use those for a rainy day? Another thing, and a point I made earlier, was an emphasis on modern learning environments. Furniture, fixtures, and equipment can go an awful long way by just encouraging the district and also anyone else involved in the project as it carries forward to put a lot of emphasis and a lot of study into the sorts of furniture that can be integrated into learning spaces. On a personal note, in our office, we have sit-stand workstations throughout our entire office space. This is for adults. We're talking about students that have a lot more energy than you and me, that are having to sit down all day. So let's give them an opportunity to move around and to make the most out of these spaces.
The, you heard about the community survey results on June 11th, so we're not going to repeat that, but the bottom line resulting from our recommendation or thing to bring it back around is that the cost impact and estimated tax impact of, for, if there were a referendum in November 2018, a potential referendum of $125 million would have an estimated impact of $1.89 per $1,000 of property value, which would be a $189 per year increase per $100,000 of property value if the referendum were pursued and adopted. And do you have any questions after all that?
So I'll just frame this up, just for the board and just for everybody. I think it's important for the board to really focus the questions and comment just on the Facilities Advisory Committee and try to restrain yourself from picking out paint colors and other things. For tonight, there'll be plenty of time to talk about those things, but first of all, thank you to the Facilities Advisory Committee for the years, you know, months. I mean, it's such a long period of time.
Seventeen months, yeah.
Of work. So thank you for dedicating a lot of unpaid volunteer professional time to just the work over the period of time. It's a great presentation. So just wanted to say that first before opening up for comments.
Thank you.
Board question or comment? Mr. Gollum?
I just also want to say thank you. That was an enormous amount of time and effort that you all put in, so thank you so much. So early on in the presentation, we talked about in 2016, there was work done as far as looking at what it would cost just to get the schools kind of up to speed a little bit or ever, and that was $153 million, and that didn't include modern learning environments. Help me understand how we're doing it for $125 million with modern learning, learning environments in four new schools. I'm having a hard time.
Well, we had different levels of need that were identified in the report. There was a level one, two, and three, which shouldn't be confused with tiers, because we use the word tier, but levels one, two, and three were the, the... Well, we had different levels of need that were identified in the report. There was a level one, two, and three, which shouldn't be confused with tiers, because we use the word tier. But levels one, two, and three were the urgency of the need. So there were certain things that were a level one need, which were, you know, for example, the boiler is, you know, two and a half times its useful life. It's probably going to go out. You should replace it. Versus some upgrades that were maybe more aesthetic in nature and not necessary. Structurally, the buildings are in very good condition. It's the mechanical systems that really needed to be renovated. So this is taking a look at replacing everything that has a need. There is a way to use a portion of that and still have a functioning school district and have enough money left over that as things continue to expire and continue to need to be renewed, that those can be done in a timely manner. I think the issue is that we have a number of things that are starting to culminate right now, and they need to be addressed.
So what types of things were in the $153 million that aren't in the $125 million?
Yeah, give the report. There are a lot of things. I mean, windows would be one that would just come to mind, you know, where you have a single-pane window and, you know, replacing it with something in terms of the cost benefit just, it really isn't needed. And when you actually do the analysis of it, it has a payback of 70 years, for example. So that would be something that, you know, we may say is a level three. It doesn't need to be addressed with the $125 million. So when you multiply that over 14 different facilities and, you know, the issues like, you know, the roof, for example, you know, there were recommendations on, you know, replacing the roof that were probably more extensive than what would be considered with this referendum. That would be another thing. Some of the asphalt patching, I mean, there are things that you can do just to continue to maintain a facility without having to replace it. So I would say that the $153 million was probably more of a bootstrap approach to it. What we were able to do is identify really those level one items that are of the highest need. So again, you got to kind of pick and choose. You're going to have things that you have to do as deferred maintenance, and then things that you want to do to improve the learning environment. So we believe that we've been able to achieve both with this dollar ask or recommendation. I can give you more examples.
No, that's a good example.
Okay.
I was just, I was having a hard time reconciling.
Good question.
Yeah, I mean, these are, and, you know, the thing is, from our perspective, I mean, you start talking about these numbers, it's like, when you really think about it, it's a lot of money, you know? So it really helps you to appreciate it when you start to look at, you know, each individual item and what it costs to get it done.
So to continue off of Mr. Dohmen's question, because I was trying to do the math here as well, I'm already thinking about like, okay, so how long before the level twos, which we're not addressing, become level ones? And I'm curious if there was any study, and I know you guys have only had a short period of time to put this together, but, you know, how do we look forward as well, even if we take on this $125 million? Like, what's our, what's our range before we're talking about having to do another referendum or another, you know, approach to deal with additional deferred maintenance, just so that we're being open and honest with, you know, our constituents in terms of like, what they can expect in years to come? Is this a one and done for the next 10 years? Or is this like, part one of what may become a 30-year plan? Because I do, the slides for the record were great, like, I wish I had them in front of me, but the one that showed like the boilers or the one that showed all of the emergency repairs, like, if we're, if we're not going to address all the boilers, we're only addressing the ones that we're pretty sure won't make it through another winter, like, five years from now, is there going to be another set of five boilers that we're worried aren't going to make it?
So my understanding on the topic of the boilers, and I would certainly allow Melissa to intervene at any moment.
She loves her boilers.
Is that, is that we are going to be replacing almost all of them. I mean, any of the ones that have not been addressed and are in need. And actually, the discussion on the boilers led us to the recommendation of creating some sort of a capital reserve to address exactly what you're talking about. So there is a long-range plan that goes well beyond the $125 million. However, we believe that, I mean, when you're looking out 10 to 15 years, that that would be able to cover us for the time being. I mean, obviously, we don't know what the future holds. But, I mean, I would say with a good deal of confidence in having spoken to Melissa and Greg and the numerous meetings that we've had, that they have a high level of comfort in knowing that these things are going to be addressed for the foreseeable future. Again, we just don't know where we're going to be in 10 to 15 years. But this is going to get us, you know? It should certainly get us to that point. That would be my belief. Do you agree, Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you.
The follow-up question I had was, I was thinking along lines of, what are the things that are keeping you up at night that aren't being addressed in this recommendation that you wish could be your, you feel like are essentials but aren't able to be done within the $125 million?
I, I think, once we got the results of the community survey and we applied it to our priorities we had identified, and we considered equity across the school district, touching all the buildings and considering the needs of all the buildings, I think the proposal addresses everything that would keep you up at night. I guess there could be something that could occur you can't envision, but, and that might keep you up at night with some kind of weird nightmares, but specific, specific things of which we are aware. I think the proposal and the different items that are proposed to be covered are the most pressing, most important for the buildings, and most important for learning and the success and safety of our students and staff. And they are included. So it's a terrific, it's wonderful that we were able to address everything we think is very important within the scope of what the community would support based upon the survey. So I don't think there's anything keeping me up at night about what we've studied for 17 months that we can't do. You can?
I mean, I think the really, the very encouraging part of all this was getting the community feedback from the survey, to see the percentage of people that support, you know, potentially going to referendum, and their commitment to making the district better and improving the lives of students was very encouraging. So being able to take that information and then merge it with what we've learned, I rest really easy at night, and I'm going to. I feel very good about this. I don't think there's anything that would be like a keep me up at night thing. I mean, I think there are things beyond that that you may want to address that might be just more quality of student life in terms of getting a fieldhouse or, you know, addressing certain needs of pools and things like that. But for the most part, I mean, in terms of the learning environment, we're going to do, we're going to accomplish much.
Thank you.
Good question.
Board questions coming?
So you talked about, oh, go ahead.
Anybody else need to go before? I just wanted to give everybody a chance to go first before, okay. Okay, Mr. Dohmen?
You talked about the learning environment, so obviously, there's substantial change at the new schools. Okay, how would they change at the schools that currently exist? Right, we can't really reconfigure too much in terms of building structure. How does that sort of meet the needs of what are teachers and?
Yeah, and again, I would defer to Melissa again. I believe there's going to be a substantial amount of investment in the FFNE at all the facilities to address that specifically. And, what's that? I'm sorry. Furniture fixtures and equipment. So I do come from the industry, so. But FFNE can have a tremendous amount of impact on a space like that. And I think in terms of just, like, if you were to say return on investment or, you know, the qualitative side of it, the most you're going to get for your spend, you're going to get it off that, you're going to get it off your lighting, you're going to get it from carpet and paint, you know? Just improving the emotional side of it, you know, that side of it that people live in every day. And that is going to be addressed as part of this.
Any other board question or comment? I've got a couple. Going back to that model school slide, can you sort of walk through how, I think we've heard about this a little bit before, but just to walk through kind of what those elements are and why they would be considered part of a model school? And just to be clear, like, with renovation and rebuild, no matter what, those elements of those would be potentially part of those things?
The model school features that we, we learned about newer school buildings and the requirements for modern learning, and talked about those. Among the features of a model school that's important is a good HVAC and thermal comfort is very important. That would be included in our proposal. Safe and secure also included, community accessible. I think that refers to being able to have part of the building that's accessible to the community, whereas the rest of the building is not, perhaps for recreational activities or the like. I think that may be a feature of some of the rebuilt, the new schools, but whether it's available at existing schools is, it may or may not be available. I know that's an issue. The school, modern schools, open and flexible, that doesn't mean open concept classroom schools. There would still be classrooms, so buildings, the classrooms being more flexible. That's an area where the new buildings may be better than the existing buildings that are improved. So you may have some flexibility. As I understand it, you can't necessarily knock down walls and have a big room when you had to. And I think some of the older buildings that we're proposing to be replaced with new buildings are the ones that would be most difficult to make a more modern learning environment, like McKinley, for example. And so some of the newer buildings or less needy buildings may be better at reconfiguring them to have more flexibility. Natural light is important. The, having fully accessible buildings, again, that's in our list of items for all buildings. The timeless design, that goes to, a new building should be aesthetically in keeping with the neighboring, the surrounding neighborhood. And so a new McKinley, or a new Lincoln, or a new Wilson should have a timeless design that makes it look like an older building, fit within, but have the benefit of being a new building. Some of the buildings, the new buildings would have better parking and drop-off. That would, I think that would be envisioned for the new buildings. And some of the existing buildings may be lacking in that area. And given their layout on their, the property that, where they are located, it might be difficult to accomplish that for the existing buildings. Collaborative learning spaces, that's a big feature of modern school environment, because in learning these days, there's a lot more collaboration among kids, instead of kids just sitting row by row and desks and not being able to move. These days, they move around and learn. We saw some of the elementary schools and middle schools where the, you know, old-fashioned desks are gone and they have tables that can be joined together. And so there is the ability to collaborate even in our older buildings and without having a new school building. Project-based learning is part of it as well, being able to study together and do projects together. Having better and more specific art and music spaces are a feature of a modern school and, modern school. Having a stage where performances can take place and having safe, accessible outdoor play areas and comfortable eating spaces. Some of the school buildings, the cafeteria situation isn't ideal for having the kids eat all together. And I believe is one of those Underwood, and that's one of the schools we propose to be replaced, I think. Is that right? Underwood's cafeteria split, is that right? Or it's, I can figure, Lincoln, okay. Well, anyway, one of those school buildings that we're proposing to be replaced with a new building, it would have obviously better cafeteria, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the other thing is that this is, it's a model school, so there are definitely Bawatosa-specific things that came up in our discussion, and I think it's important that everyone identify that. I wasn't just saying, let's just come up with a model school. It's, you know, as Lisa had mentioned, it's paying respect to the local architecture. You know, it's paying respect to collaborative learning spaces. And I also think the project-based learning, I know that's, that's definitely an initiative of the district, so it's something that we wanted to incorporate. And it was great seeing the community survey come out and, again, just kind of reconfirm that observation that we had made.
Thank you very much. The one other question I had is just on...
I'd like to add to this.
Okay.
Two, two things that struck me, among all these other things, were that the teachers valued an outdoor sheltered learning space, such as an internal courtyard. And also, in the new building, young people of particular ages were more grouped together in a wing or on a floor that with the design from scratch, you could really do some neat things about where certain age groups were located in the building.
The other question I had was on the, I believe this is the school's safety slide. There was a term I just hadn't heard before, which was a secure entrance sequence. Can you explain what that, I just don't know the term?
That would be going through multiple checkpoints to get into the, into the building itself. So it would mean have, be, having to go past, for example, some personnel from the school district to check you in without just having one door and you walk in and you're, you're in, into the space.
Some of the school buildings, like McKinley and others, have an entrance you have to be buzzed in. The door's locked. You come in, you either go upstairs or downstairs, and you, and you don't, you aren't really restrained from going beyond those stairs to the rest of the building. The office is there, but there's no second door. So there are a few, few school buildings like that. I know the middle schools were improved to have, you enter and then you get buzzed in, and you can't go beyond those doors. And there's an office there where they check to see why you're there. And I believe the high schools are the same way. So elementary schools are, because of their configuration and how they're built and how they're laid out, some of them, it's difficult to accomplish that, the secure sequencing. And so some of those buildings we propose to be replaced have, are lacking in that area, and that's why we propose to replace them.
Thank you. Jess Binger?
So there's a couple of different schools that I often consider similar, not necessarily in terms of the, what you've uncovered in the depth of your analysis. That would be McKinley and Roosevelt, Washington, and Wilson. Can you talk me through, if, for a student who walks into each building, once renovations are complete, a new school's complete, so let's imagine this eight to 10 years from now, what is the learning environment in a Roosevelt versus a renovated school versus a newly-built school? And what does, what does one have that the other one doesn't have? Are there similarities? So can you talk me through kind of the equitable experience the kids would have across those? I'm trying to just wrap my head around, how different are the learning environments for a new versus a renovated? Or are there not?
Well, one thing about McKinley versus, is it Roosevelt, I think, right? Is that Roosevelt, they are kind of sister schools. They look alike from the outside, and they're similar, I know. But Roosevelt has had remodeling and an addition put on it, and it has an elevator. And so Roosevelt is sort of ranks higher than McKinley on a lot of those elements that we talked about because of the remodeling and addition. I think that was put on in the 1990s, so it's pretty new for our school district. And so Roosevelt, right now, has an improved school building that has features that McKinley doesn't have. And so if McKinley's replaced and there's a new building, I imagine McKinley would have things that Roosevelt doesn't have in that it's a newer building. But Roosevelt does have some portions that are new. It has an elevator, it has more, has multiple, has additional classrooms that McKinley doesn't have. And so McKinley being new would bring it closer to Roosevelt, and of course, I guess, exceeding Roosevelt. But the, and the learning environments with the addressing the different features of all the school buildings to improve the aesthetics, the furniture, paint, carpet, and addressing the buildings on all those different elements that we mentioned, the Roosevelt learning environment should be comparable to a new school, although a new school certainly would be an enhanced learning environment with all the bells and whistles that you would get from a new school. So I think Roosevelt or another school that isn't built new would be better and would be improved with all of the features and things that are improved. But it certainly isn't going to be the same as a new school. I mean, I think that's, I'm assuming that without picturing both of them. And then the other schools you mentioned, I think all of the schools will be touched and improved in all the areas we mentioned, and so that each one will be, have an improved learning environment. We can't propose to build seven new elementary schools, unfortunately, so, or whatever the number of old elementary schools is. And so the proposal to build four of them is to address the four that are most in need on all of those other elements, and that can't be improved as much with non-rebuilding, can't be improved in those four elements as much as the other buildings. And so, and also, all of those buildings are located in different parts of the district as well. So the idea of geographic equity was pertinent to our thinking, and we proposed rebuilding those school buildings and improving all the buildings across the district in the interest of giving all school students an improved learning environment.
Couple of follow-up questions. For the buildings that are going to be renovated and not rebuilt, what are we looking at for lifespan of those buildings?
Some of those buildings might be standing 200 years from now. I mean, it just depends on the structural integrity and, you know, the way the building was built. building was built. And I don't know each one in particular, but I mean, a lot of these are basically, you know, they're, they're masonry through and through. So, it's not necessarily the structure that's an issue.
Yep.
The issue has to do with the flexibility of the learning environment. You know, case in point would be this building here, you're looking at that wall that's structural. You can't open it. If you wanted to join the two rooms that are next to one another, you couldn't do that. In one of the new buildings, you may be able to do that, where you have column support, and you have non-load-bearing walls, and you have buildings that are designed to open up and be flexible in a way that an existing building may not be able to be flexible. So, that would probably be the biggest change that you would see from a student's perspective. From a creature comforts perspective, you know, you're making, you're going to make compromises in an existing building, plain and simple. I mean, you may not be able to have the same, you know, zone heating and cooling systems that you're going to have in a new building. You're going to have to work within the confines of what you have. That's not to say that it's going to be poor, it's just not going to be the same as something like that. You know, natural lighting, for example, if you're on the top floor, you can bring in light wells, you can do things to make it, you know, more enjoyable. So, there are just a lot of small things that can come together that, that would make it, you know, a more enjoyable experience. But I don't think that it would be, you know, a difficult thing to create a great, modern learning environment within an existing space. I don't think that the existing schools are going to end up worse off than the new schools, per se. We're going to put a lot of emphasis, we would suggest putting a lot of emphasis, again, to our point of focusing on that FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, to mitigate that and create as much equity as we can.
The last question I had is, some of the questions I've gotten is, are we building schools for the size of population that we will have 15, 20, 25 years from now? Can you speak to that?
Well, we have had a lot of discussion around that, and, you know, in terms of where the population is, average household size in Wauatosa, it's probably more a function of, of district students, or students from outside the district, that's going to have an impact on the population of the school, not on family size. There is some residential going in, but it's not, you know, compared to the existing housing base, it's not that substantial. It probably has to do more with, with having more, you know, I guess, more students from within the district attending district schools that would have an impact on the number of students that are attending. And am I correct in saying that, Dr. Erdl?
Yeah, there's still roughly 19% of our school population that attends private and parochial schools. Possibility, the idea is, when you're building a new school or renovating, that you create enough space to accommodate student growth, because, again, we don't know what's going to happen down the road. But you always want to create flexibility for future boards and future community residents to make decisions about facilities down the road. So, I think that was a big part of what we were doing, trying to create, because things could change too, as far as open enrollment students. The board could say, we want to double the number of open enrollment students, we want to increase capacity, or it, it opens up a lot of flexibility. So, trying to maintain the size structure of the school, similar to what we have right now, and the footprint at this point.
Last comment I would make is to echo my colleagues who said this earlier, and I just want to say it again. Your work as a committee on this is incredible. Your commitment and volunteer time, and expertise that you had and you brought to this, and you've developed over time, is really, really commendable, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board question or comment? All right, is there any community comment?
Thank you.
Seeing none?
No.
Thank you very much for the, oh, go, go ahead. You want to just step up to the mic? And then just provide your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Betsy Metzger. I'm a resident at 2130 North 72nd Street. I currently have two children at Washington, and with the baby, we've got about another 18 years in the district, so. Quite a bit of interest in the subject at all three of the, the school levels. I want to just confirm if I understood correctly, that at the elementary schools, will all of the schools receive some level of investment? Is that correct?
That's the, that's the proposal, yes.
Proposal, sure. And then, the, the second is, does the proposal include anything as to how we would accommodate the, the timeline of the students? I heard you mention it would take about a year or so. I'm familiar with capital expenditure projects on an industrial or manufacturing side, and understand, you know, displacement of people and that sort of thing. I was curious if, if that's been rolled in, because certainly, spending this amount of capital in, you know, one year or five years, how long are we looking to implement this?
Are you talking in terms of, of the, the number of projects that are going on at the same time, or an individual project, how long it would last?
I guess I was looking at the number of, of projects, like, as we talk about two completely new schools, two renovated, plus the others. Are we talking about building all four schools in one year? Are we thinking they'll be spread over the next five to 10 years? Just kind of, and, and while they're being built, if I understood, it's going to be the same site, so I assume kids will still go to the school onsite while you're building the other one? Or are we looking to do any shuffling around of students while we're building?
To answer a yes to everything that you just said. So, there's, we haven't got into the transition of students, that's something we would get into, certainly. I mean, just simply, if they're building a new school onsite, kids would stay in the same site, transition over when the new building's built, tear down the old one. The other ones are going to be some challenges we're going to have to look at. I mean, the thing to remember, there's going to be disruption no matter what we do. Some of it's really good disruption, kids can look out the window and watch construction take place, I guess, but we have to figure it out to limit the disruption to the educational environment. So, that's, that's going to be one of the challenges, if the board moves forward and does something with the recommendation, we're going to have to figure that piece out of how that transition and timeline, because it would not, I mean, it would be several years that construction would be taking place. And so, it's, there's going to be a timeline that we would put together to try to address those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
My youngest daughter was a kindergartner at Roosevelt during the addition there, and there was a year when her class was in a trailer adjoined to the building, and they were called the Trailer Kids. And their picture was on the wall in the hallway, and I saw it many years later. And there was a great deal of excitement, for the kids, actually. And as a parent, I had a parent-teacher conference in the trailer with, with the teacher, and, and then you, but it doesn't last that long. And then, when it's over, you have the excitement of your family walking into the, the brand-new renovated area, and you know you're the first ones in there, and you know, you know, you watched it built. So, you know, you lived it. So, it's a very, it sounds, you know, disruptive, but actually, to me, it was a very exciting time to be there when that was going on.
Hi, Sandy Zelmer at 2472 North 65th Street. I have a couple of questions. One is, I, I just want to clarify, as far as the new buildings, how long do we feel that those buildings will last? Because in, in general, it seems like new buildings don't last as long as buildings that were built. Are we talking about 30 years, 40 years? I, I mean, we're tearing down some buildings in Wauatosa now, that are only 30 years old or less. So, I just want to reinforce, I hope that they're built like our schools in the past. I realize that there's a lot of things we need to change in the old schools because of the whole learning environment, and I certainly agree with that. But I don't want to end up having to replace the new schools in 30 or 40 years, when we've had these other schools for like, almost 100 years, some of them. The other thing is, I was, it was a good point, as far as pointing out what it looked like, the numbers of children. I know we looked at that in the 90s at the referendum too. It, it's very important, because there is some change going on in Wauatosa, on multiple levels. But I, we definitely are, from my viewpoint, are going to get an increased population because of the number of apartment buildings that are going up, or have gone up recently. We also have a, a number of, combination of young families that do have children, and young families that have chosen not to have children, and then, of course, we have people older than that. Have we given any thought at all, or is it totally not a good idea, for any of those schools we are talking about completely tearing down and building of just doing an addition? I don't know. I definitely know some of the things in a number of schools beyond just those four are not real acceptable. One of the things that's been pointed out to me, not just in my neighborhood school, but in another neighborhood elementary, a number of them, is air quality. I mean, to the point where people get sick, because the quality, the air is so bad when it gets warm. And sometimes, it's not just in the summer, it's even in September. So, from the recommendations that you recommended for the schools that are just being renovated, do you feel that with those recommendations you made, as far as air quality, that those will address those issues? Okay, great, great. I, I just, because I, that was something that was brought up to me by another person in Wauatosa that, but anyways, thank you, I, I really appreciate all of your work. We're all just trying to get this right for our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary Jo Randall, 727 North 59th Street. So, I feel like November's a pretty short timeline. So, my question is about marketing and detail. Now, you said 125 million, you must have very specific things you're going to do in the other buildings that you're not going to rebuild, correct? So, will we have diagrams available in, in the next month or two? What's, I guess it's, what's the marketing plan? And I, I did a lot of work on a referendum in Muskego, where my grandkids went, and that was a lot of it. There were a lot of visuals in every building, so when people came into the building, for whatever purpose, they had a visual right in that lobby of what it was going to look like, prior to voting on the referendum. So, it seems like kind of a short timeline. I want to be able to sell this, what I'm hearing tonight, to my neighbors, my friends. So, how much detail can we get, and how quickly? I guess I'm talking about architectural drawings, I'm talking about very specifics about, okay, Jefferson School, this is how Jefferson will look different. East High School, this is how East High School will look different. If we're going to be asking for the money for all of that, so, timeline, I guess, is my question.
Yeah. I can, you want to speak to that?
Go ahead.
I think what I've heard from the folks, the project team who are working on this, is that they are working on a communications and marketing plan, but don't want to, you know, go too far without obviously getting the board to really dig in and approve the plan. I mean, we're not, we haven't approved anything, right? We just heard the proposal. I'm sure we'll go round and round with a series of meetings over the course of the next month, so we want to be careful not to put the cart in front of the horse. I know, as a communications person, I understand totally the, the value of the communications and marketing plan. I know Jill and Keller are part of the project team that are looking at the marketing and communications plan, assuming that, you know, board action eventually decides to go forward. If it does, then I'm sure that they will flip a switch and have all sorts of resources available for the community to read through and know about. Is there anything?
No, I just think the most important thing is that we, we communicate facts, and if people don't have the facts, they can't make an educated decision on how they want to vote for it. So, we have a huge responsibility to get that information out, and you will have those questions you just asked, you will have answers to those, very shortly after the board were to make a decision to pursue a referendum that would begin immediately, and we would be having public presentations between August and November. Significant number of public presentations to get that information out, but there will certainly be a lot of information, a lot of facts sharing.
I ask one follow-up, in regards to the 1.5 million in potential savings, at least initially. Would that include, with, you know, the additional AC, HVAC improvements? I would assume that there would be some kind of bump up in expenses that we would have as a result of air conditioning the buildings. So, does the 1.5 cost that in? Does that make sense?
So, you're talking about an increased energy cost?
Yeah. So, assuming, is that, is that part of the equation?
I, I, I think, I, I believe so. I'm not, I'm not sure of all the details of the equation. I think it was, in our discussions, it was kind of a, you know, a number that was arrived at that could be a potential. I mean, right now, everything is so conceptual in nature.
Sure.
I think the recommendation is more for the board, as you move forward in planning, if you decide to move forward with the referendum, to just pay special attention to that opportunity. And it's not really necessarily to name any sort of a price or a number, but that there may be something in this, in this area that, you know, you could do. So, the, the 1.5 million dollar number came from our discussions on a potential, you know, there may be some greater detail to that, that would need to be learned as you move forward in your own process.
And I think the, the cost savings from having four new buildings, and the other aspects of the improvement of the other buildings, Melissa and her team looked at how, what their operating costs are.
Oh, oh my gosh. Did you hear me this whole time? I think I'm pretty loud. The 1.5 million is the savings that would occur, taking into account everything. That's the estimated savings from having all of these things in place, so.
Thank you.
Could I just make one more comment? I just want to say that I agree with Mary Jo. I don't, both Mary Jo and I were involved in the 1990s referendum, and there's a lot of preparatory work that could be, started to be done now. And just, we have to get quite a bit of a number of signatures to get on the November ballot. And that takes a ton of work. That's part of the reason it took us two times to get the $3 million referendum passed through, because initially, we did not knock on doors and talk to people. What you suggested, Dr. Erdl, is a good start, but we have to go beyond that if we want to see this thing passed, from my viewpoint and from what's happened in the past.
Just, just so you're aware, the process has changed. We don't need to get signatures to, for the school board. The school board just needs to go through their own process to vote to have it put on the ballot. It's not a signature gathering.
To get, to get on, to have a referendum on the ballot?
Correct.
Because every other referendum needs a certain percentage signatures, and we had to do that.
That's not what's needed.
Okay, well, that's great to hear.
They have changed since the 90s.
That's great to hear. I, I mean, but there have been real recent referendums, not school ones, that they had to collect signatures. But schools are different now? Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board or community comment on the item? Mr. Joe.
This is for Dr. Erdl. I'm going to put you on the spot, but how many students do we have currently that are non-residents? And the reason I'm asking is, I'm just thinking, what's our capacity if, you know, we did get an influx of students in, you know, we still have capacity, is my understanding right? We would just accept less non-residents, so, does that make any sense?
Capacity is a complex question, but ultimately, the way we've been operating the last five or six years is, we stay right around 73, 7400. So, when resident enrollment goes up, which it has recently, generally, non-resident then goes down, because there's fewer available seats. If we choose to have additional sections, which we have the availability in our buildings, and the ones we're recommending to be rebuilt or, or new, then I would have that opportunity to increase those sections, which you could increase with either resident enrollment or non-resident enrollment, but it maintains that flexibility. Does that answer it?
Well, how many of those 73 or 7400 are non-residents?
I think it's about 1,200 students.
Ballpark is fine, thank you.
Any other board or community comments on the item? Seeing none? Thank you again, very much, everyone, for all of your time and effort on this. I'm sure we'll- I'm sure we'll, actually, this is, this is it for you guys, so, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thanks.
We do have a tour set up to go, we've got some buildings in Oak Creek, so it's not quite the end of the road for our efforts.
I think we might be called upon too if, if...
We'll keep them active, so thank you to you two, and thanks to everybody on the line.
We're not going to Disneyland just yet, or Disney World.
We will keep you from your families a little bit longer.
Thank you.
Thank you to your families also. All right, moving on to the staffing report. Director of Human Resources, Craig Hubbell, report on the staffing plan for the 2018-2019 school year. And for anybody who wishes to stay, you may, if that was the only thing you wanted to remain for. It is a public meeting. You're free to do as you would like.
Is that what you want? You don't have anything with us?
Staffing Report 2018-19. First, I want to start with a couple of words of thanks. First, thank you to the school board for giving me the opportunity to talk about staffing for next year. We have a lot of exciting news in the staffing realm, and appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you to the couple of board members who touched base with me about questions about the report in advance. I always appreciate the opportunity to touch base with you. And a lot of work, so just a general thanks to the many principals, teaching and learning staff, business services, that helped out with creating the staffing report for next year. And a specific shout-out to my colleague in human resources communications, Dean Niemeyer, supervisor of human resources. I call him the data master, and I appreciate his help. So, before we jump into the report, three preliminary comments real quickly. First, we're going to talk a lot about numbers, FTEs, staffing levels. One thing I'd like to, for us to remember, is that behind all these numbers are people. Each one of these FTEs represents at least one person, and I'd just like us to remember that we have outstanding people in Wauwatosa, and it's because of those people that an outstanding education is delivered to our students. Second preliminary comment is about whom are we speaking when we're talking about the staffing report? When we say we have 241 non-teaching staff, who are those people? When we say we have 556 teaching staff, et cetera? Well, the answer is, these are regular employees. So, not included in the staffing report are seasonal employees or substitute employees. And finally, in education and life in general, there are a lot of acronyms, and I learned one tonight, FFNE. Anybody remember what FFNE stands for?
Furniture, fixtures.
Accessories, equipment.
That's better than I could have done. I did write it down, though. I have another, it's not FFNE, but it's FTE, stands for full-time equivalency. And I mean, you talk a lot about FTEs, and an FTE, one FTE is one full-time position, which may or may not be one person. So, one full-time employee is one FTE, but if we have, for example, two half-time employees, .5 plus .5, that's one FTE as well. So, with those preliminary comments behind us, we can move to page three of the staffing report, and this is the general overview. This provides the big picture for both teaching staff and not teach, non-teaching staff. One thing I would like to point out is you'll see an increase, for example, with the teaching staff between last staffing report and this staffing report. I'd like to emphasize that this is staffing report to staffing report. So, in some cases, some of these increases came last summer, so they actually were in place for the 1718 school year, but again, it's staffing report to staffing report. So, it's not necessarily, in this case, 11 increased FTEs for teaching between 1718 and 1819, because again, some of those FTEs were put in place last summer and therefore were in place for 1718. I've already made reference to it. One of the biggest takeaways from this overview is the 11 increased FTEs, and we're going to jump into those a little bit more as we go through in overview fashion, the 11 charts that we do have. So, speaking of the charts, if we go to chart one, which is on page four of the packet I handed out, charts one through three deal with elementary staffing, and chart one deals specifically with regular classroom teachers at the elementary level. There's a significant increase of FTEs since the last staffing report, more specifically 5.5 FTEs. Two of those came last summer with Eisenhower. There were some class splitting based on numbers and needs at those levels, specifically kindergarten and second grade. So, two of the FTEs were for that purpose. And three of the FTEs you'll see on page five are because of an increased staffing for Underwood STEM Education. So, there are three additional FTEs there, and then a .5 JK, Junior Kindergarten increase at Roosevelt. So, that gives us 5.5 additional FTEs at the elementary regular classroom level. Feel free to ask questions at any time, by the way. Chart two, this also deals with elementary FTEs, specifically elementary specialists. There are five categories of elementary specialists. The first four are tied directly to the number of regular elementary sections. That'd be art, physical education, Spanish, and general music. So, because the regular elementary sections have gone up, since there's a direct correlation between elementary sections and elementary specialists, it is no surprise that the elementary specialists have gone up as well by approximately 1.0 FTE between last year and next year. The instrumental music FTEs, band and orchestra, those are based on voluntary enrollment, and so there's more fluctuation with those numbers. Moving to chart three, the last of the elementary charts. These deal with student services FTEs, special education teachers, school counselors, psychologists, et cetera. There's relative stability here. There is an increase of approximately two FTEs. In general terms, every year, Student Services does an analysis of what the needs are and staffs accordingly. You'll see that there's an increase of approximately one FTE for special ed teachers and one FTE for SLPs, speech-language pathologists as well. So, that's the elementary overview. And if we move to the chart four, charts four through seven cover secondary FTEs, and we're going to cover charts four and five together. These are what we call the formulaic FTEs. Formulaic FTEs is a Wauwatosa term, and as the phrase would imply, the, there's a formula. And in general, the, we take the projected student enrollment, we put it into a formula. The formula takes into account number of courses per student, number of students per class, and number of classes per FTE. The student enrollment goes into the formula, and then the formula gives us an FTE number. The principals then take that number, and then they have wide discretion to staff accordingly. And what they do is they take into account the enrollment in the different disciplines, and then they figure out how many FTEs they will have for business education, choir, reading enrichment, et cetera. Two big takeaways that I get from these charts, when we look at the 30,000-foot level, because these are based on student enrollment, the formulas, you'll notice a significant decrease in FTEs at the middle school level of approximately four FTEs between last year and next year, and that's purely based on enrollment. Similarly, you'll see at the high school level, an increase of approximately two FTEs at the high school level. So, some enrollment shifts create some FTE shifts. The other big takeaway is because of extended time scheduling, if you look at chart four, we did have to modify the formula a little bit, because previously, it was assumed that there would be five classes per FTE, but because of extended time scheduling in the core areas, and specifically for this purpose, comarts, math, science, and social studies, the assumption is now four classes per FTE. So, fewer classes per FTE means more FTEs, so you'll see an increase of approximately one FTE in each of those areas. Chart six deals with, we're remaining in the secondary realm. These deal with secondary student services FTEs in the same way with elementary student service FTEs, special ed teachers, speech-language pathologists, et cetera. Student Services does an analysis of what the needs are and staffs accordingly. The biggest takeaway I get from this is if you look at the bottom line, the yellow line, denoting the change, there's essentially no change between last year and this year, with the exception of adaptive physical education, there is a slight decrease in the need. The final secondary chart is chart seven. These are the undefined FTEs. undefined, again, is a Wauwatosa term. These are secondary FTEs that do not fit into the formula, and they do not fit in the student services category, but these are individuals who do important work for our students, and they are important to staff. There are some increases in the undefined FTEs. I'll point out three of them. The Fab Lab at West, slight increase there to devote some resources to the Fab Lab. Human Geography Course, of course, is going into effect next school year. There's some additional resources to keep the class sizes low there, and also to work on the curriculum. And then also, the art at the middle school, you'll see an additional partial FTE to work on integrating art throughout the curriculum. So, it's not simply art classes over here and everything else, kind of an effort to integrate art through the, through the curriculum. So, those are the secondary FTEs. Moving on to more district level, if we go to chart eight, these are the district-level student services FTEs, very relatively stable here. They, you will see a reduction in the need for a teacher of the hearing impaired, and again, that's based on the need or lack thereof in the schools. Chart nine, we'll see the student learning FTEs. These cover district-wide student learning positions, and you'll see some switching in the types of positions, which in some cases do not really denote a change in FTE, but a change in emphasis. A couple of quick examples, reading specialist at Jefferson resigned to take an administrative position elsewhere. She's being replaced with an instructional coach. So, you see a minus one for the reading specialist, plus one for the instructional coach. That's one example. Also, you'll see some increased needs in the area of equity. So, what I'd like to do with chart nine is to step back from the numbers a little bit and show how these numbers align with one of the major strategic objectives that the district has. You have a bonus in this year's staffing packet. If you look in the back, you'll see a sheet. I encourage everybody to pull it out, please. And the sheet largely deals with chart nine, with the instructional coaches. It also deals a little bit with some of the equity specialists that we've had. Obviously, equity is a major emphasis, has been and continues to be a major emphasis for our district. And at the last board meeting, there was a very productive discussion around coaching for equity, and somebody made an outstanding comment that really, why do we have coaches for equity? Shouldn't everybody be a coach for equity? And at some level, shouldn't we all be advancing the equity, the equity initiative? And that is true. That being said, there are some specific positions devoted to coaching others in the area of equity, and that's what this chart deals with that you have in front of you. And this kind of goes through the trajectory that the district has, has gone through over the past few years. If you look at 1516, there were zero FTEs devoted to coaching for equity, and so zero FTEs means zero dollars in salary. 1617 went up to .78 FTE, $54,000. Last year, we had 2.28 FTE, $156,000, and next year, 1819, 5.5 FTE, almost $375,000. And perhaps more than any other chart in the pack that you have in front of you at least, I believe that this shows the alignment of at least one district goal with the staffing, with our staffing plan. So, with that, if we go back to chart 10, please, which is on page 16 of your packet, these are other programs, oftentimes referred to as the county programs, although technically, like the virtual school may not be part of the county, for example, but Children's Hospital, Vellar Phillips, River Hills, and the virtual school. Relatively stable FTEs here, especially as we look over a two-year period. You'll see some fluctuation, but relative stability. And then finally, we have our all other employee groups. Charts one through 10 deal with teaching staff, those who receive a teaching contract. Chart 11 is everybody else, select employees, assistants, administrative assistants, administrators, et cetera. And here you see relative stability as well. You do see some fluctuation, we see some fluctuation with assistants, regular education assistants, special education assistants. In some cases, with regular ed assistants, if there's a particularly large class size, for example, or a need for literacy assistance, there may be an increase, and you do see that here. With special ed assistants, it's really based on need. We could have a student move into the district or move out of the district, and just with that one move, it could affect the FTEs. So, those are the charts. I'd like to make one quick word about hiring, because obviously, if we have FTEs and we have needs, we need to fill those needs, and the way we fill those needs is, to the extent that people aren't returning, we fill those needs through hiring. So, staffing and hiring are interrelated. We have about 61 positions to fill. After the board approved the consent agenda tonight, we have about 47 of those filled. That leaves about 14 positions remaining. And one of our goals in staffing has been and continues to be diversity of staff, and kind of the strategy we've been using and intend to continue to use, I'd like to just reinforce here, is to increase the diversity of our applicant pools. And we do that through our recruitment efforts, through reaching out to HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, going to career fairs, our teacher ambassador program that was specifically developed to reach out to diverse candidates. The teacher ambassadors hosted a career fair this year with approximately 120 individuals showed up, and I'm pleased to report that several people who attended that fair have been hired, including one on today's consent agenda. And so, yeah, so we continue to recruit for diversity, and that is one of our goals. I also point out, we are always open to new ideas about how to recruit better or how to increase diversity. I had a productive conversation the other day with a person I respect. He proposed an exchange program, that perhaps we could come up with an exchange program and perhaps increase our diversity in that way, and so that's something that we're looking into as well. But I did just want to point out that that continues to be one of our goals. So, I'll conclude where I started, that behind all these numbers are people, and the people we have in Wauwatosa are outstanding, and I'm confident that with these staffing levels, projected staffing levels, that the great work that they do for our students will continue. So, with that, are there any questions, comments?
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Fraley.
So, on the sheet about the equity coaches and specialists?
Yes.
I'm seeing 5.5, but when I'm looking on chart number nine?
Yes.
I'm seeing five.
Yes, exactly. And so, the, thank you for pointing that out. The, and I should have emphasized this more, chart, the addendum, I guess we'll call it, to the staffing report is, deals with equity coaches and specialists, and so the, the last individual listed on the 2018-19 is actually a specialist.
So, Ms. Perkins?
Ms. Perkins, exactly.
That is, okay.
So, if we look at chart 11, yes, 11, she would, she's actually considered a select employee, so her .5 is listed there.
Okay.
And one other thing I'll point out with that chart, as long as we're on it, is that this just lists salaries, so it doesn't include insurance, doesn't include FICA, WRS, things of that nature. Yes, Mr. Domon?
So, I'm also looking at that chart. If you can just help me understand, because like you said, we talked about recently about all coaches should be able to do things like that?
Absolutely.
Which I completely agree with, but, so we have three or two extra names on that in 2018-19 versus 1718. Are those people who we've just changed their title, or are they actually new hires or a combination of the both?
It's a combination. So, Mr. Brock and Ms. Karas, just to go through the list? So Mr. Brock and Ms. Karas, just to go through the list, they were in the positions prior, sort of. Let's take them one by one. Mr. Brock was in the position this last year, 1.0. Ms. Karas was in the position last year, but hers was .5 specifically devoted to equity and .5 devoted to other instructional coaching. So that's a .5 increase. Ms. Detra will be at East. She is an increase. She's a 1.0 increase at East. She's a new hire, yes. Mr. Henderson is or has been a teacher at Longfellow, and he will be a 1.0 Equity Coach at West. So that is a, I guess, transfer slash new hire. Ms. Naze was a teacher leader, if we look at Chart, which Chart 9, I believe it is. Next year, she will be an instructional coach focused specifically on equitable instruction. So I guess that would be, I hate to call it just a new title, because that implies that it's not going to be substantively different, but yes, yeah, exactly. And Ms. Perkins will be fundamentally similar. I believe her role may change a little bit in terms of like helping out with curriculum and things, but she was in a specialist role last year and will be in a specialist role next year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board question or comment? Is there any community comments on the staffing report? Come on up to the mic. Alan?
Good evening. Catherine Raby, 12148 Meadow Court, 53222. First is a question slash comment. Could the charts have been put on the screen? I, it was just hard to follow because I had nothing in future, if it's possible.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Yes, we can do that. Also, I do have some extra copies if anybody would like one.
So I'm a parent at West. I'm also a BSU parent volunteer, as well as a BSU Girls Summit volunteer. So I'm coming from all those roles. And I do want to say that I know that I don't have 100% information, but I can only go by the information I know, and I have some concerns. So in, I think, Chart 9, you talked about increased needs in terms of equity?
Increased resources dedicated to equitable instruction, yes.
Okay, increased resources, okay. That's a good thing. You mentioned that coaches are for equity, are very important. And I want to, I want to understand, are the coaches primarily for the students, or are they primarily for the staff?
Ultimately, ultimately for the students, because ultimately, everything we do is for the students. That being said, the coaches, their primary role is to help the staff with equitable instruction.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking is that when Monique Liston left in January, I was told that she was not there primarily for the students anyway. And she had a really good relationship with the students, with students of color, maybe all students, but I'm talking about students of color. And her leaving, I think, was very, it was a little damaging, because the students did not understand why she left. I mean, she told them. I shouldn't say they didn't understand why she left, because she was clear in why she was leaving, but why she had to leave. And as a parent, I share the same concern, and the concern is magnified, because in May, turquoise left, even though she is not, she had nothing to do with equity, she was a Career Center Coordinator or whatever. But she had a special role, because students of color felt comfortable with her, because she is a woman of color, and she could talk to them in a way that other staff could not. And also, she understood where they were coming from. And so in the space of four months, Wauatosa West lost two women who are very articulate, well-educated, and who the students connected with. And as a parent, who is in that building, and I recognize that many of the students have no one to advocate for them. And, you know, really, we cannot sit here and say that we understand, because we don't. I don't understand. And my kids don't even tell me, I want to say maybe 90% of what's going on in school. I actually learn more at the BSU meetings than I learn at home. But, you know, so stuff is happening at school, and these kids, for whatever reason, their parents are not in the school, and they don't feel that most of the teachers understand or care. And we had two women who were in the school, who the teachers, I mean, the students connected with, and I don't know how far, you know, how much they could advocate them with administration, but at least the kids had someone to go to. And now they're gone. And I do not understand why that is so. I don't know about Ms. Perkins, because I heard that she was leaving, and now you've said she's coming back, so I don't understand what happened with her. But as of May, she didn't have a job that I knew of. She was, she was, because I was told that her position was reconfigured, and so she has a, can you just say it?
Absolutely. You are correct in that initially, it was reconfigured, and then there's been a recent change, and we've been able to find the funding to bring her back.
Okay. And that's great. I must say that, as you say, that each of these FTEs is a real person, and I think the roller coaster of emotions she must have gone through, if that could have been avoided, that would have been nice, especially because she's a woman of color. And, you know, when things happen time after time, it's hard for people not to see that there's another reason for it. Diversity of staff, I agree, but how do you retain who you have? And I want to believe that Wauatosa attracts and hires quality people. And if these quality people are leaving, and I'm talking about staff of color, and again, I only know West, and I only know what I'm told, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to accuse people, but I can only say what I know. So if you cannot retain who you have, what's the point of recruiting new ones? I think Tulsa really has to figure out what is the problem. Why are our students of color not comfortable? Why are they not doing well? Why do they feel they cannot go to any teacher in the building? And then you also have to figure out, why do staff of color not feel comfortable? And why are they leaving? And I really wish that everyone who has a say would really want to do that and would really do that. Because, I mean, to sit here, year after year, and be talking about the same things is very frustrating, and it's hard, it's hard for me to go into West and hear another story about a kid who did this, and so-and-so happened to them. And, and, you know, I have no authority. I asked about being a parent advocate, because I feel so strongly, and apparently, well, I don't know, I don't know. The answer I got was not, maybe there are no such things as parent advocates in West, but it's, in 2018, I feel we should do better for all our students, especially our students of color. And I feel that as citizens of the world, we really should have compassion on those who are having a tough time. And I really hope that as a school board, you will take this seriously.
Thank you very much. And I can just say, and I can just say right after the staffing report, we have agenda tonight to talk about school culture, knowing that recruiting is only a part of it. I know in speaking, I work at Northwestern Mutual and talking to our Director of Diversity and Inclusion, you know, he always says, or he quotes this author who says, you know, diversity is being invited to the party, and inclusion is being asked to dance. And we want everybody to feel comfortable and confident in being in the schools, but for this section of the agenda, we're just talking about the staffing report. But I hope everybody can stick around to talk about the school culture report, which will immediately follow this. So thank you, and I think we all hear and agree with, you know, the spirit of the comments. Any other community comment on the agenda?
Just what I'm missing in all the list of, oh, I'm sorry, anti-camps, 729 West Lloyd Street, 53213. What I'm missing in all the detail of the FTEs, if you could tell us what percentage of the staff currently are staff of color, and what our percentage of students of color are, just so we all have those facts clearly in front of us, particularly going into the next conversation. And then you mentioned you had 61 open positions, you've already filled like 47 of them, just waiting for the budget approval, and you still have 14 open. But of those 47 new hires, how many of those are staff of color?
Definitely the total staff percentage, and this is based on data that was collected about two months ago, so it does fluctuate with resignations, et cetera. But it's approximately 7% staff of color. And the students, I want to say 33%. I'm open to correction on that. And in terms of the 47 we've hired, I can affirm that we do have some staff of color. We have not gotten, we have not run the numbers. I don't even think we have the numbers yet. We do ask on a voluntary basis for new employees to fill out something called the EEO form, where we talk, they have the opportunity to give us that information. So to the extent that, I don't even think everybody's filled that out yet, and we haven't compiled the data in any case.
And that was something that you had brought up during the last meeting, was would it be more prudent to bring numbers once the school year begins, when we really have a sense of who is, you know, signed contracts and is actually working in the buildings? Over the summer, there's a bit of transition. So I know that you've committed, you've committed to kind of bring those numbers back at the beginning of the school year, just so we can look through them. Good question.
Bridget Forbes, 7701 West Hadley Street, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, 53222. Craig, so you said 7% of our staff are staff of color. What percentage of our resignations from this school year were staff of color?
I do not have that number. I mean, I could, I think we could figure that out, but I don't, off the top of my head, I do not have it.
Yeah, I think that as we're looking at our equity plan, and I would have to reread it, to be honest with you, I want to make sure that we're diving in deep to figure out, how are we addressing our school climate? You know, you're talking about school culture, so that when we're working with our staff, we're developing our staff, we are working to make sure that we are addressing the issue of micro and macro aggressions, so that our staff of color feel supported, feel welcome, and know that this is a place where they are respected and treated with dignity and are seen as the experts that they are.
Thank you. Ms. Fraley?
Can I just add one more number that I'd love to get at some point? And that is, I know the staff of color overall is 7%. What is the percentage of teachers in particular?
Definitely.
So.
Mary Jo Randall, 727 North 59th Street. I've been part of this discussion as a board member, as a parent, as a part-time employee. And I see everybody's best efforts, but I see so much confusion, and I, one of the things that I think would help, are there written job descriptions for each of these Equity coach, diversity coach? These people come and go, and they're reconfigured, and then we add in some math or literacy responsibility. That's all good. But if you have a written job description, which is required by board policy, is there a written job description for each one of these positions?
For sure, what we have, when we post a position, we give a description. Whether we have a document that says job description, I cannot guarantee that, but we do have, when we post a position on, typically on weekend, et cetera, there is a description there.
Okay. Well, unless board policy has changed, there should be one on record. And to me, the value of that is then you can start analyzing. You can start saying, you know, is this person able to fill this role? What do they need in order to fill it? Or do we need it? I fully agree that retention is the question here. It's retention. And that's from talking to teachers of color, to teachers who are not of color and are trying to understand their role. It seems like without the clarity, that you can create even more problems by having people come in, and where our teachers who are not of color are feeling like, well, are we getting left behind, which is not the case. But there needs to be really a lot of clarity, there needs to be words attached to this, because until there are, we can't look at it and say, you know, we're accomplishing something and we're not. But I, you know, it's really sad, because everybody has the same intent, everybody is here for the kids, and it too often becomes about the grownups. So.
May I add one word about retention? In case, I was going to address it at the culture presentation, but in case anybody can't stick around. First, I want to thank everybody for speaking. As Mr. Rollins said, the spirit of what you say, we 100%, or I speak for myself, I 100% agree. We need to work on retention. We need to continue to work on recruitment and everything else that everybody said more articulately than I can. Specifically, with respect to retention, we did, in approximately March, this issue came up, and we, I specifically asked all non-administrative staff of color in the district if they'd like to participate in a group that would kind of research this issue and give us ideas about why or how we can better retain staff of color. And the group did meet. The idea was for them to meet on their own, without an administrator there, so they could have free discussions. It's my understanding they did meet, gave us a lot of valuable feedback. We got some initial recommend, I wouldn't call them recommendations, they emphasized that they were not recommendations, there were some brainstormed ideas. So we do have those, and the group is going to reconvene next school year and kind of flesh out what they gave us initially. And we are taking seriously what they already gave us and are going to continue to do so as we get more recommendations from them. So that is one area that we're trying to, one way we're trying to deal with the retention issue.
Thank you. Any other board question or comment?
So before you were here, Craig, I had done some deep diving, looking at the numbers on retention. And it was because parents were coming to the microphone in the board meeting and saying all the good teachers are leaving. Well, it was parents of younger high school students, and so in the introductory classes, they had the new teachers, and it was the new teachers who were leaving. Not all of them, but, so I looked at percentages from years of longevity in the school district, and it was incredibly high, the number of first-year teachers who left. And then the next step down was the number of second-year teachers, third. Then after three to four years, it leveled off, and the retention was quite good, well, relatively speaking. What comes to mind here is that the pressures for any first-year teacher to stay are tough. And then you add another layer. And then you add another layer of vastly, you know, more intense considerations and issues. So what I'm meaning to say is that the idea of first-year retention is already difficult. And then you add all these, you know, the challenges for a person of color coming into the district. And it just has to be an enormous strain. So, you know, the, I can't speak to what those folks are feeling, but just to say, to recognize that everybody has a layer. At least in my life, I look at how many layers of stress can I handle all at once? And I usually have tipping points where the one more thing is the thing that's just going to send me over the edge. Well, these folks have more layers of stress than everyone else. It's not like a first-year teacher doesn't have stress and retention challenges and things like that. I'm trying to recognize here, I hope it's making sense to people, that we're told, you know, I have, I'm a white male, what do I know about, you know, about an old? What do I know about younger people of color, for example? But I just can't imagine, you know, they have even more than what we're saying here for that, those layers of stress and complications to their professional lives. So it's, I can't imagine. Because they have a layer of considerations above and beyond everybody else. And it would be terrible if they just had, you know, the things we're talking about here. But there's an accumulation of other things, too. So I wonder how a person deals with it. You know, they have so many things all at once. So that's, you know, just trying to, you know. And so the first-year issue is for everybody as well. I'm not saying look at everybody. But I'm saying that it's going to be an ensemble of things to address this issue. Thank you.
Any other board question, comment on the staffing report? Community comment on the staffing report? Anything else? Seeing none, we will move on to the school culture report, where Mr. Hubbell will report on developing positive school culture for staff.
So, building positive culture. This is a broad topic. And I was trying to think of an analogy. And I had a couple ideas bouncing around in my head. And I settled on building culture at some level is like creating a nice flower garden. So we have an image here of the Allen Centennial Gardens at UW-Madison. If anybody's ever been there, beautiful place. If not, I encourage you to go there. And I have my first prop ever for a board meeting, I have a fake flower here. So the, at some level, building a positive culture is very similar to a flower garden in my book. It's, flower garden is comprised of many different elements, flowers more specifically. And in the same way, the building of positive culture is really a compilation of positive characteristics of an environment. Both need to be tended. We need to tend to the flower garden, weed it, et cetera, water, et cetera. In the same way, we need to tend to our culture. We can't, you know, it's not something we do once and then walk away. And then I want to emphasize something else, that with both, both can always be improved. We can always improve the flower garden. I'm sure we could all look at that and say, hey, you know, we can maybe move these flowers over here or whatever, make it better. And undoubtedly, culture can always be improved as well. And that includes Wauwautosa. So through the course of this presentation, I do not want to give the idea that I say we have arrived, because that is not my message. That being said, I do believe we do have a lot of positive things going on that I would like to emphasize. So, first, connection to the strategic plan. In order to, or one reason we want to create a positive culture is to promote strong relationships with staff, administration, community, and the board. Having a strong culture should help us do that. And also, having a strong culture should help with staff recruitment and retention. So there is a connection to the strategic plan. So I was trying to think of ways we build culture and the different categories of culture building. And I came up with four or five of them. One of them is giving voice to staff. This is a big area. And part of having a good culture is making sure that everybody has a voice. So there are some ways, we try to do this in Wauwautosa. One is staff participation on committees. We have a professional learning advisory committee. Come up with, they come up with recommendations for professional development for staff. There's an equity committee. They help come up with the equity plan. There's a superintendent's advisory committee. There's a representative from each school. Beats with Dr. Erdl each month. Among other things, they come up with a calendar or advise on the calendar. So there are staff participation on committees. That's one way that we try and give staff a voice. Similarly, and Mr. Lamachia mentioned this earlier during the facilities presentation, there's a staff survey, there was a staff survey on facilities. It was part of the facilities advisory process. And staff voice was key to that initiative. There's a school perception survey that's done each year. That's another way that staff can have a voice. It was presented to the board on May 21st. And you'll see some data below on that survey. And we'll be going through that in a little bit. Staff participation in the hiring process. Another way to, for staff to have voice is for them to have a voice in who their new colleagues can be. There's an expectation that a content team teacher will be on the interview team. So if we're hiring a Spanish teacher, there should be a Spanish teacher on the interview team, for example. Our teacher, there should be an art teacher on the interview team, so that our colleagues can have a voice in that process. There are opportunities to shape school improvement plans. Each school comes up with a school improvement plan each year. Those schools, those principals have something called data dives in the summer. And the data analysis that comes from those data dives helps inform the school improvement plan that the principals present to Dr. Erdl. One other way that we try and help have staff, or give voice to staff is that Dr. Erdl, the WEA leadership, WEA stands for Wauwautosa Education Association. And I meet essentially on a monthly basis. And also informally, we talk about different issues and we exchange ideas. And the ideas that they, they present are taken into account. Just one quick recent example, I was talking with Patty Chapman and Katie Wilkes a couple weeks ago. And they were talking specifically about the transfer process that is in place if a teacher wants to, for example, transfer from school A to school B, and there's an open position at school B. They presented an idea. Based on that idea, I took it to Dr. Erdl, the directors, presented to the principals. And we changed the administrative guidelines based on that input. And I believe that Dr. Erdl shared that with the board about a week and a half ago. And I shared it with, with the entire staff last week. So staff voice does matter, and we try and give voice to the staff. Another way we try to create a positive culture, or foster a positive culture, is to try and create a culture of inclusion. We try and do this in a variety of ways. There's something called opening day, that I'm sure many of you have been at. And that's really the one time all year when all staff is in one place. And so therefore, whatever happens on that day is impactful on a substantive and a symbolic basis. This last year, we specifically had a speaker devoted to equity. Dr. Demond Means, former superintendent at Wauwautosa, I mean, McQuantheesville School District. I believe former human resources director in the Wauwautosa School District as well, spoke on equity. And more specifically, spoke on what it means to be convicted, to have a strong conviction in the importance of equity work. And so that was on opening day that we, that he talked to us. Similarly, Dr. Chavez Correll spoke to us, gave us some staff development. All staff attended a half-day session with Dr. Correll, talking about our identities, recognizing who we are. And as we understand who we are, that helps us understand the bigger picture and the lens through which we view the world. So that is another way we tried, have been trying to foster a culture of inclusion. Recruitment efforts focusing on candidates of color. Teacher ambassadors, we started the teacher ambassador program this year. Mentioned it earlier. We had nine teacher ambassadors, plus some others who just really believed in the cause. They weren't officially teacher ambassadors. And they helped us try and reach candidates of color to try and boost the diversity of our candidate pools. We post selected positions on something called handshake, so that we can reach HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities. And we do a variety of other initiatives to try and reach candidates of color. We had the teacher recruitment fair, for example. Retention, an important issue. It came up earlier during the comments. The, I invited staff of color to participate in a group that would provide recommendations on retention. Some preliminary ideas have been presented. The group wants to finalize that list next school year. And we've already, even though the list was kind of a brainstorm, we have followed up on that. I forwarded it to the board. So the board has been made aware of the brainstorm list. The group asked, a gentleman named Reggie Morris did sort of an analysis of our district. And the group asked for the recommendations that Mr. Morris had submitted. I asked Dr. Erdl. Dr. Erdl shared a PowerPoint with me. And I shared that with, with the individual, the point person who asked me for it, inviting her to share it with whomever she wished. One other thing that was in the brainstorm from the group was the, that we should, that there's a perception that, and I'm quoting, loosely quoting the group, the document that I received, is that white males in the administration promote and encourage other white males without regard to equity. And so hopefully, the three new administrators who are coming, joining us in the district, will help fight against that perception. Of the three new administrators, two assistant principals and one supervisor of elementary education, none of them is male, and not all of them are white. So hopefully, that will help fight against that perception. And then just one other thing with fostering a culture of inclusion. Many of you may recognize these signs, we accept and value all students. It's just one other way that we've shown that we're trying to foster a culture that, where everyone is welcome. So, another area in terms of attempting to create a positive culture is recognizing and appreciating excellence. We do try to do that in a variety of ways. The distinguished service awards, the recipients are selected by board members. They're recognized on opening day. We had 13 recognized this last school year. And if anybody's interested in seeing who those individuals were for 2017, 2016, or prior to that, we actually post those on the human resources website. Just kind of trying to highlight the outstanding staff that we do have. We have a recognition banquet every spring, honoring retirees and those with 25 years of service. We had approximately 170 individuals attend in April. And so that's one way we try and do that. Another way is the support staff luncheon, which is held every June. And we have approximately 50 people attend each year. We're trying to express our appreciation to the support staff. Another way we try to promote a positive culture is communication. Keller Russell has done an outstanding job with communicating with staff in a variety of ways. I'll point out two ways here. The weekly roundup is a weekly newsletter specifically for staff, highlighting event, highlighting events going out, going on throughout the district. And one, I believe, outcome of that is that it creates a sense of Wauwautosa community. It's not just teachers at Lincoln or teachers at West. It's the sense that we are part of a larger whole, Wauwautosa, the Wauwautosa School District. Similarly, there's a monthly newsletter that Keller puts out. And that goes to the entire Wauwautosa community, including staff. And that's one other way that we try to keep people in the loop. Another way are presentations that, and I, Ms. Lawless, I believe, referred to this during the, during the facilities presentation. During the facilities advisory committee process, they went to each school and presented to staff. So one other, that was one other way that, that we try to communicate with staff. And there's one other thing I'll point out, is that every year, Dr. Erdl and the directors visit all district schools to provide an overview of key topics and get their input on really whatever they're thinking. Another way we try to create a positive culture is providing competitive compensation and benefits. That includes competitive salaries. When I say competitive salaries, I know that sometimes there is an impression that we lag behind other districts. And there's anecdotal evidence that so-and-so left the district and is being paid more in this other district that may be nearby or not. And I don't dispute that. At the same time, I would point out that many people come to us from other districts, and we pay them more than what they're receiving in their district. So perhaps the same impression exists over there, that Wauwautosa pays more. So our salaries are competitive. That doesn't say they're the highest in the area, but they are competitive. Compensation and benefits. I'm proud whenever we have a new teacher orientation, or I'm talking to a new teacher, to talk about the 0% premium contribution for health and dental insurance for teachers and other, most other full-time employees. There may be another district in the state that has a 0% premium for health and dental insurance for teachers. Again, there may be. I'm not aware of it if there is. And if there is, it is definitely in the minority. So that is an outstanding benefit we provide, the board provides, I should say, to the staff. Post-employment benefits, since 2011, a, I don't want to say most, because I don't have empirical data on that. But many, many, many school districts have dug into the post-employment benefits. And typically, they are not as staff favorable as they were prior to 2011. Wauwautosa has kept its post-employment benefits intact. And that is, I mean, that's an outstanding, outstanding benefit. Our leave policies, we have generous leave policies. Another way we try and promote a positive culture. 11 sick days per year for teachers, can accumulate up to 112. And we're constantly working to improve our leave policies and everything else. I'll give an example of one recent change. Prior policy indicated that five days could be taken for basically funeral leave for an immediate family member, and that was defined. And then one day could be taken for other relatives. So we periodically were confronted with a situation where somebody's best friend passed away, or their best friend's mother passed away, who basically helped raise the person or whatever. And so we're in these situations where technically, individuals were not, could not access funeral leave. We presented a proposal to the board to change that, so that instead of one day could be taken for funeral leave for other relatives, one day can now be taken for other individuals. So that would include a best friend, a best friend's mother, et cetera. So, and there are other ways where we create, try and create culture in small but meaningful ways. A few things I'll point out. District T-shirts were distributed on opening day, jointly sponsored by the district and the WEA. The Last Teacher Work Day, each of the past two years has been a Monday. I believe this year was June 11th. And Dr. Erdl sends out and, or has sent out an email each of the past two years at least, and maybe three years, letting teachers know that if they have their work done, they didn't need to come in on that Monday, recognizing they're professionals, recognizing that they're working hard all year. So they don't need to come in just to come in. And then one other thing I'll point out, in terms of creating culture in small but meaningful ways, is access. Tell a quick anecdote. I was talking with a colleague, and she was telling me that in her, it was her first or second year in the district, she had an idea. She emailed or called Dr. Erdl. Dr. Erdl said, do you want to come in and meet? And this, this individual couldn't believe that Dr. Erdl, the superintendent, would actually meet with our actually meet with her. And that is just indicative of what I believe to be the open access policy that does exist, not only with Dr. Erdl, but I would hope with, with all administrators. So, we have a lot of individual flowers, and our goal is to create a positive culture, a beautiful flower garden, if you will. There are areas where we can improve, obviously. I would like to point out some measures of, I believe, success, that's not to say we can't get better, but if you look at the bottom of page two, these are, this is empirical data from the staff survey, and you'll see in each of these areas with retention, whether the district is a good place to work, you'll see that these numbers have increased over the past couple of years. The two that I'm most happy about, I guess, is the third one, our culture has, our district has a culture of open dialogue. It was a 2.8 in 2016, it's a 3.5 this year. Obviously, I'd like to see that number higher than 3.5, but it makes me happy that there's a, among staff, there's the impression that there's more of an open dialogue, and I hope that continues. And to the extent that I can participate in an open dialogue, anybody who's listening to this, I encourage them to talk with me. And then also, I'd like to see that in the fourth one, I would recommend this district to others seeking employment, that has gone up as well. And then anecdotally, Keller Russell reports that there is an increase in individuals reaching out to her to share possible stories, typically positive, positive stories for the Weekly Roundup and other, and other publications. So with that, what I've been talking about up to this point are district-level initiatives, if you will, district-level attempts. It's important to point out that it's not only a district-level matter, it's also a building-level matter, and Michelle Minor, principal at Lincoln, is nice enough to kind of give us one example of what that might look like at Lincoln. And I don't want to put too much pressure on Ms. Minor, so I want to emphasize that what she's saying is what's going on at Lincoln. She's not necessarily expected to represent the entire administrative principal staff.
Thank you. Michelle Minor, and I have a handout for you, so I can help you around. I could use a wiggle stool right now, because I'm having a hard time. Thinking about that with our facility study, actually, I think there's a couple, and I think there were a couple that's there, too. So just as Mr. Hubbell said, he talked about an analogy, I, I always think in terms of analogies, we always want to make connections. You know, my analogy is a heart, I think that comes to mind for a couple reasons. I've, this, next year will be my fifth year at Lincoln, and I can honestly, truthfully say, I love this school district. I really, really, truly do. I love this school district, I adore Lincoln Elementary, the people I work with, the students who enter those doors, and the support I receive. I've worked at districts from one coast to the other, this is the fifth district that I've been in, and Wauwatosa School District is a very special learning community, and it really is that community. Dr. Hubbell, or Dr. Hubbell, Mr. Hubbell, gave me the example, gave the example of the flower garden, and I said the heart, but I do think of the heart as a health, or as an organ. It's the center, it's what's beating inside us, and we really do have to focus to strengthen that and to keep it healthy. You can work, you can come up with plans and things like that, but unless you tend to it, you're walking your 10,000 steps a day, or drinking your water, which is something I've been trying to do lately, it can become unhealthy, too. So I think these conversations that we're continuing to have as a district are very important for keeping our health, for strengthening our community. We talked a lot about culture, but I also think of culture and climate. Todd Whitaker, who wrote some books on what great principals do differently in School Culture Rewired, talks about culture and climate, and I think of some of the things that we heard today were more climate. Culture is the way we do things around here, but climate is the way we feel around here. Culture is a part of us, each individually, but climate surrounds us. So I think of those things, when I walk through the halls at Lincoln Elementary and I say that I love it, it's something that I can feel when I walk around there. It's the way people not just interact with me, but the way we interact with each other. So some of the things that we have been doing over the past five years, you may have heard of it or not, but Lincoln Elementary, you find your spark. So spark is our, just do it. I think, you know, schools have to be good at marketing nowadays, where, you know, in the public eye, and when you have that one message, that first year that I was here, we did get those t-shirts, and they said, "We are TOSA." And I went back to my office and I made a big sign in my office, "We are TOSA." And that message of who we are is our branding, and when you believe in it, you sort of have a certain sense of pride. I know my, you know, 15-year-old son, when he puts on his Nike sneakers or Adidas, he feels pretty proud and excited. I want the same thing when you put on your Lincoln Find Your Spark, or next year it'll be Spark of Kindness is our theme. When we all share that same message, there's a lot of power behind that. We've been focusing a lot on growth mindset. I did book studies with my staff, with everybody in the staff, I bought it, from my janitor to my custodial staff to ever, all the support staff. And then I did that same book study with my parent groups, if, with PTO. We're doing another one this year on UDL principals. We've been focusing on mindfulness as well. We have a monthly appreciation table. We started individually, thinking of mindfulness activities for yourself, appreciating others in the school, and moving on to global, our community and globally. You talked a lot about many voices. I think letting people at your school have a voice in the school and the direction you're going is very important. We've done Genius Hour, which is a, a structure presented by Google, where teachers choose what they would like to study and choose their own book studies and share out with one another. I have a building leadership team that meets and reviews our data, but also just, we talk about why we're doing what we're doing and what would we like to do differently. Have little coffee chats, we have input through Google surveys, Google surveys are such a wonderful thing, and they do all the wonderful graphs and think of where we're going next. The other leaders, our voices, are our students. I've had students in my school, I just, a couple weeks ago, we painted the one stairwell, and we're going to put positive messages on it. I didn't ask permission. I think that's okay. But a group of fifth-grade students came to me with a project that they wanted. Our student leaders started a leadership club. That leadership club has evolved over the last four years, and now they're giving a scholarship out at the high school to former Lincoln students who show those same leadership qualities. That was run by my teachers and students. We're a green and healthy school, we're on level three right now, we've done composting, all of that is because of our students and our staff, and of course, our support of our parent community. At Lincoln Elementary and at Wauwatosa, at least for me, inclusivity of everyone is a priority. Everyone means everyone. We've been working on flexible classrooms, relationships are key, we've devoted time in the morning in everybody's schedule for morning meetings, which is a part of a responsive classroom series, to develop those relationships. It's not so that just the students can get to know the teachers, but it's so students can know each other on a different level. We have a soft landing procedure at Lincoln where our doors open at 8:05, and students can open, can come into the classroom anytime between 8:05 and 8:20. Again, building that relationship one-on-one time with teachers, mentors, things like that. I have a team of teachers from a variety of different grade levels, and our specialists who attend the Inclusion Summit, they attended that last summer, and I have a large team going again this year, thinking about our co-plan-to-co-serv model when we teach students and meet, meet all of their needs in the classroom. And one focus that I think will be coming forward next year even more so is the asset-based language. When we talk about students, we talk about the positive, we build on what students can do, and we always are going to be starting with that. Try to appreciate, appreciation in action. We have monthly assemblies, if you've never come, I invite you to come, they're a lot of fun, we have videos, we do cheers, we celebrate our students, but we also celebrate our teachers, we celebrate community service projects that we are doing, and they're, they really are a blast, I love doing them. Like most other schools, we celebrate with food. I like to make my staff breakfast, pancakes, we have lunches, and this year when we were looking at our end-of-the-year data for our PLC summary, we had some fake sparkling champagne for a toast for the end of the year. We give spark notes to the students and to each other as teachers. We also send spark postcards home, one postcard gets sent home to each student every year, so they know they're going to get that at some time. And then just communication that's ongoing, I do a weekly blog, we have a digital newsletter, and I'm on Twitter, trying to get my numbers up, so follow me @micheliner. But I guess just to sum it up, when Mr. Jessup asked if there was anything, I think it was you for the Facility Advisory Committee, like what in that plan can you not sleep with at night? Culture and not including kids in our school because of any difference they may have, skin color, socioeconomic, their abilities, disabilities, that's what keeps me up at night. That culture, that inclusivity of everyone means everyone, is so essential in this school district. And I do, like I said at the beginning, I love this district, and I really do believe that we're on the right path, but that is still keeping me up at night. So that is the end. Do you have any questions?
Just something I just want to add, I think culture is, when you look at overall district culture, and from my perspective, the most important thing, and we talk about it over and over, it's really relationships. And if you think about the organization with 900, roughly 900 employees, and the number of students that we have, and the number of relationships that are impacted each and every day, and every single interaction that people have, and the impact of that on culture and climate can't be, can't be overstated. The fact is, some of the relationships aren't as healthy as some of the other ones that we have, whether it's a student, teacher, a principal, or from my perspective, me as well. And sometimes our goal is to have all positive relationships, but with that many interactions that take place all the time, sometimes they're even broken, and we have to find ways to repair those to keep building on a positive culture. And I think what Michelle's doing at Lincoln and in every building, I think there's, there's really good efforts. I think Craig also said it's not perfect, and we're always looking for ways to improve it and make it a place that nobody ever wants to leave our, our school district, and parents want to continue to send their, their children. I think when you look at enrollment and you talk about the schools in Wauwatosa, that's a sign of a culture, are people continuing to send their kids to our school district? Are they continuing to move into Wauwatosa because of the schools? And we know that's the case, we know that's positive. So there's always positive things about our, our schools and our culture, but there's always an effort to improve. So we're looking for, and continuing to look for ways to improve that.
Thank you very much. Board question and comment. Mr. Doman.
So I have two requests.
Yes.
Two real questions. I'd like to see what, what percentage of resumes we receive are through Handshake with the HBCUs? You know, overall, just to see if that's an effective tool, and are we, you know, we can post them out there, but are we actually getting applicants? I think that's the true key measure. So, you know, hopefully we can do that, and then also, for my teacher advisor, advisory committee that you spoke of, I read the document they provided, there's just absolutely phenomenal ideas in there and great things that we need to do. So I'd really like to see, once that kind of gets finalized, what things we actually take action on.
Absolutely.
You know, as fellow HR professional, I know that there's nothing worse that can ruin a culture than asking for someone's opinion and doing nothing with it.
Right.
And I know that's not your intent, I know you will, but I think it would really help the board if we understood, here were the list of things they did, and here's, and understood that you might not be able to do all of them, but you know, what things are we actually doing? I think that would personally give me a great level of comfort to understand.
Definitely, and that definitely is our intention. The, the goal, or one goal of sharing it, we wanted to give you the document that we, when we receive it right away, just to keep you in the loop as to kind of the process, and absolutely the, the goal is to keep you in the loop and get your guidance as well. The number of resumes from the HBCUs, that could be a challenge because the way it works, we, we post on Handshake and we point people back to "we can." And so, but what we are doing is we do want to determine the effectiveness of any particular recruitment effort that we have. So what we are doing this year is, with each staff member of color that we hire, we are going to reach out individually and say, "How did you hear about this?" And then we'll know, if, if everybody says "we can," we know "we can." If anybody doesn't know "we can" is the, I think it's an acronym that stands for Wisconsin Education Career Access Network, surprised they know that. But it's, it's kind of the, the employment platform for most school districts in the state, or maybe they'll say "Handshake through the HBCUs" or whatever, but at least we'll know kind of how the individuals we, we have hired found out about the district.
Then just one last thing I wanted to, to say, and it goes back to your comment about the, the perception that white men, white males are promoting other white males, and I take that a little bit deeper even, and I suspect promote means more, even, even the small things, not necessarily the new job, but given opportunities, things like that. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that goes that way. And I guess I would just like to think about the word perception. So those teachers that are bringing them to your attention, that's not perception, that's their truth.
Yep.
Whether it's, might not be your truth, might not be Dr. Erdl's truth, might not be my truth, but that's their truth.
Absolutely.
So it's no longer a perception, so I'd really like us to focus not on changing perceptions, but changing the underlying actions that are leading to those perceptions. So we stop focusing on the people who are bringing us the problem, and, and going out on a limb and sharing their problem with us, but actually focusing on the people who are causing them to come to us, I think that's really what we do. And, and whether that's hiring and recruiting, whether it's talking about microaggressions, comments dismissive, you know, comments that are made at staff meetings, you know, when staff expresses themselves in a way that might be different and uncomfortable than we're normally seeing, whether that's on social media, in staff meetings, whatever it is, or a white-dominated district, we need to understand that a different way of expressing ourselves is acceptable, and that's okay. So I'd really like us to stop focusing on changing perception, but really focus on changing behavior and the people that are driving those, people coming to us saying that. So maybe it's, you know, maybe it's an actual thing, but maybe it's also just kind of a mindset that we really need to look at, what's driving those teachers to come to you, or Dr. Erdl, whoever it is, and saying, "Here's the things I'm experiencing." It's not perception, it's their truth, and we need to accept that as truth, we need to break.
So I want to thank Ms. Minor for calling out the thing that I kept writing on my piece of paper here, which is climate versus culture, because, you know, I, I think everyone's sort of familiar with the idea of the cultural iceberg, right? Like there's the observable, very tactical or technical things that we do that are very well-intentioned, but while they change the climate, the experience, the how you might feel actually today, they don't actually change the underlying culture, the root. And so when you started with the garden, I had an immediate reaction, Mr. Hubbell, only because so much of, when we think about a garden, it's the weather, it's the fertilizer, it's the, you know, how much water, but ultimately it's the soil, right? Like you, you can't.
I'm not a gardener, I trust you.
Right, no, I mean, and it's only because someone showed me a video that actually got at the difference between climate, climate and culture that really solidified it for me that we use with our staff, because the well-intentioned part of us always goes to the climate, because it's something you can say, "We did this, and this, and this, and this, and this." And we can do all these things and still not have our culture change, and it's not because we don't want it to change. And I think what's really hard, and I think this speaks to, and please, apologies if I mess up your name, Mrs. Riggsby?
Rebe.
In the back row?
Oh, Rebe.
Rebe, thank you. What Mrs. Rebe said that I circled a couple times was like, "We have to figure out what the problem is," which is messy and long-term, and I would just encourage us, as we think about our equity plan, to, even if it takes us a year to say, like, "Next year, we're going to figure out what the problem is." us a year to say, like next year, we're going to figure out what the problem is, and, and maybe spend less time on some of the, the technical stuff. And, and not to say that we shouldn't be doing this stuff in the schools, because I do think school climate is, is very important. But from a district perspective, like, do we go a little bit less on some of the climate stuff, and dig in and spend more time and energy on the root cause? Like really finding out why it is people feel the way they feel, and then trying to go at it that way. And I mean, it's, it's like the iceberg, right? Like, they didn't realize on the Titanic, it didn't seem so big above the surface, but it's the below the surface, it's the attitudes and all the unconscious stuff, the stuff we don't talk about, the stuff we don't say. And so, that for me is, is the priority to getting at positive school culture. And the benefit is, is that when you use race as the driver, everybody benefits. Because a great culture benefits everyone, but if you really get underneath the systemic oppression stuff, it, everybody's a winner. But it just, it's, it's long and it's hard, and that's something that I would encourage us to think about for next year, is how do we actually get at the root cause, and not the, the technical or the tactical approach?
Thank you. Additional questions?
Yeah, you know, reading through this, I was struck by a couple of things. One, it's, it's very formal, you know? Especially our district-level efforts are very formalized, and there's a, a glaring lack of technology threaded throughout all this. It's meetings and committees, and, and when we think about how we interact in our day-to-day, we see a tweet, we like it, we, you know, it's a very micro thought. And so, you know, how do we, how can we build structure to capture some of the micro ideas from staff? Like, you know, just fix it, I come from another district, why are we doing it this way? How do we capture that, right? Or, we talk about microaggressions, how do we capture micro-recognitions of staff from other, you know, of other buildings, or things like that, by leveraging technology and not being so formal, but having those, those kind of things permeate our day-to-day? You know? Instead of doing this one time a year, or providing the structure where these can happen more freely. So if somebody had an idea at this building, had an idea at this building, how do we aggregate those seemingly disparate insignificant ideas into, we also, then all of a sudden, we start seeing like the iceberg, or we start seeing some things that, that, that could be a real solution, or could provide a voice outside of, you know, a few committees? I think about, you know, when I added up the recognition, you know, it's 233 people out of 900, you know? And so that, that leaves a lot of people unrecognized formally, and looking at, and I add up all the committee slots here, that, and it's not, you know, probably less than 233 on those committees. So how do we give voice to the people that aren't a part of these formalized efforts? You know, how do we, and then how do we aggregate that data to make it meaningful and easy for us to, to work with that stuff? So it's not so one-way, you know, and, and then coming back up, you know, from, from the ground, it's not so formalized. So just some things to think about, you know, just on those couple things that really struck me, very formal and lack, and absence of technology in here. So how can we, how can we leverage those things to make it really accessible for everyone to communicate better, whether it's to each other, or, you know, to us, or inside their building, or, you know, throughout the district?
Thank you. That's all. Ms. Miner?
Mr. Phillips, you're so positive in your solution strategy. I so much like that. Thank you. I'm going to go to a couple of kind of things popping in my head. The first is that it struck me a couple, three weeks ago, that it seems to me that it looks like a teacher has to file a complaint in order to talk with the school board. That's not reality, but it's the, it's, it's one of those truth-perception things, and I, in a positive way, suggest we deal with that. And I know, a few years ago, Dr. Erdl organized rotating roundtable discussions with the school board and administrators, and it was so very helpful for me, and some good ideas were born of it that got to the school board. And maybe with respect to our teaching community, we could start something. Now, a pet peeve of mine is other school board members thinking of things for me to do. And so I'm not wanting to kind of push things on other school board members, but insofar as we can revisit that policy that talks about teacher communications with the school board, and make it a positive statement rather than a barrier statement, that we can improve things in that regard. And something where you can, an employee can sit down with school board member or members, and we just have it part of our rotating culture. I don't know what, I'm just throwing ideas out there for, you know, I, I think, I believe ideas beget ideas, so the first idea may be shot down, but the, the idea it begets may be the one that's, that's adopted, and that's good. And then, for me, for Mike Meyer, I need to interact with some people. I, I know when I sat down with Reggie Morris, you know, a couple years ago, and I described a certain series of events in our school district, and he mentored me and educated me as far as what that series of events meant to an African-American. I learned a lot at that lunch, and I came back to the school district a different school board member. So I need to get out and be with some people. Folks want to invite me to stuff to sit down and talk, I'm available, so just, that's my start here, to say, you know, I need to work with people more, and I'm soliciting participation with, or meeting with folks and people, anybody, you know, just to talk, just to start. That's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Additional board question or comment?
I've got a couple. First off, thank you very much for compiling all of this information. It's really helpful place to start a conversation around a document like this, so really appreciate the time and effort that went into pulling it together. Just to emphasize, a couple positive things, like the staff survey, just overall, that's trending in a great direction, that feels very good. So, there's a lot of good that's going on, and a lot of like really very good intentions and exciting things that are happening. So, that is very good. What I would, what am I trying to say? I am equally very excited to hear what the group has put together, because I really think that the best ideas around inclusion and engagement are going to come from the grassroots. And I think, to the extent that we, to Ms. Fraley's point, maybe stop doing and do more listening for a, you know, period of time where we just really get, you know, the sense from the, the staff of what, what would make a difference. And I think it's really key, and I know we've talked about the survey results, I think it's absolutely key for us to slice and dice this deeper. We just have to, and I know we've had pushback on that, we just have to. And I, for me, I can't accept that as an answer, we must. We must somehow figure out what these survey results are for different demographic groups, so we understand within the numbers, what does that look like? So if it's, because right now, I don't know what, what it is. I don't know, we've got anecdotes, we've got people sending emails on occasion, but I really don't know. I can see the full district is trending in a good direction, which is great, but I don't know if there is an issue, what demographic group is really experiencing the issue. Is it women? Is it staff of color? Is it staff of color who are women? Is it, right, I mean, how deep can we go and really understand within the demographic groups? Is it first-year staff? Maybe they're, I mean, we really don't know, because this is all the data that we have. So I think number one is, we've got to go deeper into the staff survey, and if we can't do it in a survey, what are the other ways to, to garner that kind of information from particular groups to, to make that actionable? And then, the other thing for me is, I know at, and the, the main things that we're spending budget and other huge companies are spending budget on are employee resource groups and leadership development. And when I look at the things that are listed in here, and I don't want to cast a broad brush, because I know there's lots going on, but what I would caution against is the, the idea of pulling together, you know, particular groups to talk about, like really painful topics of like challenges, and this is hard, and let's talk about all these challenging things, and not also give them opportunity to say like, let's go have fun somewhere. As, so, for example, Northwestern has employee resource groups where there's an African-American resource group that is representative of African-Americans, then everybody else that feels like they want to participate, it's not exclusive to any particular group, but they can have budget where they go to, you know, we might fund a table at an MLK breakfast, or all those folks go volunteer at an XYZ, or there's an LGBT A ERG, LGBT A ERG, that all gets together, and they have budget to fund a parade, you know, float at the pride parade down by Summerfest. And it's just way, so within a building, I think it's difficult, because you don't have maybe as many other people that look like you in your building, where maybe there needs to be more connections across the district, where all those folks don't just come together and do hard things, they come together and do really fun things, and maybe we incent those things through funding, to make connections, not just within a building, but across the district. That's seen success in a lot of businesses, there's all sorts of examples of that. And then leadership development, I think is just key. If there was a place to start with equity and inclusion, where it just has to start at the top, so rather than casting that really broad brush, I know a lot of companies and places just start at the top and then kind of take it down. So I'm not saying do more, and I'm definitely not saying do more, I think. Take the time to, to, you know, hear those results, and let's see where we can go. But again, what is going to hold us accountable? To what end? What survey data, or, we just have to identify, to your point, we have to identify the issue. Because right now, it looks everything's great, and maybe it is, but we don't have the numbers to like back it up within each demographic group.
Dr. Jessup?
So, I think there's clearly a lot of passion on this topic. There's a lot of people in the crowd, there's a lot of passion with staff and, staff and teachers within the district, people sitting around this table. I'm, I'm pretty confident that I don't have the answers, and that the board doesn't have answers to this. And we probably can't just work harder and figure this out. I think I'd love to see us moved beyond giving voice to staff in inviting, I think it comes down to, we, we need to invite everyone into the room, in a way that creates an environment where people, and if they aren't feeling comfortable, we need to figure out ways to hear, we need to collectively solve this problem. The power needs to be shared, we need to find out what's underneath the water, and it's not going to be an easy process. I think districts who are probably going to come out of the current environment that we're in, are going to have really hard conversations that are going to last a long time, and we're going to have to deal with a lot of things that we haven't dealt with for decades. And we can all, we're all going to need to work at this. So this isn't just on you, this is on us all collectively. And I think the community, I hope that you all, one, clearly you need to hold us accountable, but find ways to continue to engage, to use your expertise, your passion to push for this, and to, to be, to be in the room. And I agree with everything my colleagues are saying. This is really, this is maybe the important, this is the important topic. The buildings need to make sure that they're cooled and heated. Fine. We seem to have a plan that we are moving in that direction. This one's more complicated.
This is a rhetorical question. When was the last time we had this many people stick around past 10 o'clock? So, claps to you.
Yes.
This emphasis on the data, there's something there, and we won't have to be a statistician to figure it out.
Yeah.
I mean, we figured out that enrollment was, resident enrollment was steady just by lining up the numbers. This thing about the first-year, the challenges of retention for all first-year teachers, we just had to drill in, like you're saying, and look at it, and start to line it up this way, that way. Now, I'll, again, I'll note that the burdens on a first-year teacher of color, I have to believe tonight have to be almost insurmountable, because there's the regular burdens, and then there's the, the extra burdens, and it's too much for, for a person, I think. So, but, I don't know, we just need to do what Dr. Jessup Anger said, and get everybody in a room and start looking at stuff, talking.
Sean, can I just ask one question? But just to confirm, we actually don't know the breakout by race and ethnicity for this data?
That is my understanding. Dr. Erdl?
Correct. We do not.
Okay. So like, we actually, we don't have a baseline. So, 4.1% could agree, but the .9 could all be staff of color, or special ed assistants, or whatever.
Correct.
Okay. So we have to figure out how to keep anonymity, and maybe it means that we don't share that slice and dice at the building level, because if you only have two staff of color, or one LGBTQIA staff, that they're not going to feel safe, but maybe we get it at the highest level to be able to figure out. Like, so, where I work, we have, we have goals, and it's, you know, 85% of staff X, but of that 85%, there's no differential between subgroups, because of 85% of the white folks say, yeah, everything's great, but the staff of color don't. We could still hit our goal, but not hit our goal. So, so I agree. We need the data.
Any other board question or comment on the topic? I will say, so this, I hope this doesn't come across to anybody as like beating up on anybody.
Right.
Like, we are, could not be bigger cheerleaders of the work that is being done and will be done, and there's a lot, for me, I feel a lot of optimism in the track that's being laid, so, and it's 10 o'clock, we're supposed to talk about it, so I really appreciate, I mean, all the time and effort that's gone in, and excited about where this is going. And I hope that's the impression that is left in here and in the community, that there's good energy being put in. Is there any community comment on the topic?
Mary Jo Randall, 727 North 59th, I'll be brief. I don't think I heard the word "trust" in this discussion, and I think that's a huge missing link in the discussion. So, you know, you can have committees, and I've been guilty of this, been part of committees, and we do the work, and we have the ideas, and then we don't follow through. So, who's going to trust, you know, that that's going to happen the next time if they put the work in? If, if Mr. Hubbell and Dr. Erdl go out to a school and engage in a conversation, and then there's some negative consequences following that, that's a damaging thing. Those things happen, those things happen, and, and we need to acknowledge that they happen. Because, you know, Mr. Murray, you can talk about roundtable discussions with teachers, but if they've heard you at a public meeting criticizing them and talking about their pay grade, they're not going to want to sit down at the table with you and get anywhere. As board members, you can change that. You walk into those buildings, you show up, you, you go to the office, and then you knock on classroom doors. You introduce yourself, you think the teachers are being there. It's scary. It's scary the first time you do it as a board member, it's a little bit scary for the teachers the first time, and then pretty soon, they look, oh yeah, there's Mary Jo. Hey, Mary Jo, did you know this is happening? Did you know that's happening? And Dr. Earl, I know you will agree that I always brought that right back to you when I did that, correct? I did. I did. So you guys can change it, but it takes a collective effort. And just one practical idea for your visits to the building, if you would start out, if you would do some homework before you go and start out with saying, hey McKinley, I just heard that this happened in your building. Start the meeting that way and don't put the burden on the staff to have to come up with, with the discussion items. That's one thing I've heard repeatedly in, in many buildings, that it's awkward because they feel like the burden is on them to bring up the discussion. But anyway, trust and it can be rebuilt, you know, one person at a time. So you guys can do it.
Thank you.
So I, I did want to start by saying that Wauwautosa has been a great district for my kids. So the fact that I'm here talking isn't because I personally experienced, well, I, I mean, a few things obviously, but generally speaking, my kids have thrived in this district and I do appreciate it. And I do want to say that Dr. Erdl has been very receptive to any requests I've had to meet with him and I have actually, he's been very receptive when I, I've taken like two friends who are women of color to talk to him about possibly working in this district. So his door is open to me. And I do want to say again, I'm not trying to criticize you, I'm just bringing things that I, I know or I've heard. So this building positive culture, does this relate only to staff or is it positive school culture or is it positive staff culture?
My understanding was that the presentation was going to be on building a positive culture for staff.
For staff, okay. All right. So it's not school culture. Because I recognize the omission of parents and I do feel that parents can be your greatest advocates or supporters or helpers and they are not, they are not here. With the equity committee, even though this is talking about staff, I'm not sure which one it's, which equity committee it is, but I was on one. And I want to say that it was very, it was very top-down. As a parent, you know, I can say what I want and go home, you know, I don't care, but teachers couldn't. And I have heard this many times, that teachers don't say things because they're scared of losing their jobs. Obviously, we don't want people being rude or just, you know, talking in inappropriate ways, but I feel that teachers should be able to express their dissatisfaction or their challenges without feeling that they are going to lose their job or be reprimanded or not get a promotion or however that works. Also, where do, where do teachers go when they have a problem? If they feel they can't go to their building, building head, the principal, who do they go to?
I think it would depend on the particular topic, the, and so I think it's really case specific. I think one thing that's clear, I mean, anybody can always contact me, they're, I know teaching and learning is very open, I can't speak for them, but I believe they're willing to talk to anybody. I know Dr. Erdl is willing to talk to anybody. That being said, there is typically a process that is followed and oftentimes the first step in that process, not always, but oftentimes the first step is to talk with the individual with whom somebody has a challenge. That is what we typically encourage, but again, it's really case-specific.
Okay. All right. That's fine. And may I mention two things from a parent, from a parent's perspective? So I was on the district working group and the race group for a while and we had turnover, it was, Jessica was heading it and then it changed to someone else and then it changed to someone else. And the work we had done under Jessica was totally disregarded. We had spent a lot of work, we had come up with strategies and documents and the people that took, took over did not seem to care. They had their own agenda and this I know because this is my personal experience, they had their own agenda and everything we did for two years, at least that I was on it, was totally disregarded and we, this was supposed to be a parent group now and we were now doing what we were told and I left that group because I don't have time for that. That, that's one thing. The second thing was the proposed course on African-American literature, I know it's still in the process, but I have mentioned, I think two, two or three times, where is a parent voice in this? Because we, parents have some thoughts and the kids have been asked, the staff have been asked, when are the parents going to be asked? I, I would like to know. I think you need to include parents more if you really want to build a positive culture. We can help our kids, we, we can talk to them. Sometimes they, I mean, they're not 25, I think that's the, the age where the brain is supposed to really click, click in. So, you know, sometimes, you know, we can talk with them because they don't always have it right. But if we don't even know, we don't even know what's going on, then that, there's a problem. So anyway, those are just a few things.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional community comment on the report?
Hello, everybody. I'm Deb Falk-Pallick. I live at 7435 West Wells. First of all, I love the picture that you chose. Mainly because my son this year lived in Slichter Hall and this was the view from his dorm room, which my husband and I liked looking at that more than the carpet in his dorm room. So I was listening to the board meeting on June 11th when I heard Mr. Rollins say that inclusion was going to be a topic of discussion and that week I had a meeting with the special ed director and we talked about your comment and she's like, I don't know what he means. And so thank you for emailing back. And so when I hear the word inclusion professionally and personally, guess what I automatically think of? I think of, and thank you, Ms. Minor, you were the only person that I heard the word used tonight was disability inclusion in that minority group. And I'm hoping that in, when you're doing inclusion, that you put this in here. And I really would like to echo the sentiment of the prior speaker. I know she was speaking more about parental inclusion of parents of color, but I'd also like to say that more of a voice for parents of students with disabilities also. I want to thank Mr. Meyer. He has reached out to me, I actually am humbled and grateful that you have contacted me to ask for perspective. And I think sometimes it's good to, if you don't walk in these shoes or you don't work in these shoes, to understand people's perspective and things that frustrate us. I know two examples that I want to give is that when emails go out from the district saying there's something happening and I know there were, there were some of you in this room that got an email from me a couple of years ago when CMP parents were asked to come and learn what this is all about. And I reached out to Mr. Carter, Mr. Hughes, Beth Aaronberger and Tris Kowkowkowsky at the time. I said, well, is there going to be something learning about the math curriculum, parents being invited in the schools who have kids that aren't taking the CMP and learning what our kids are doing? Well, that wasn't planned for, but it happened. And then I noticed that subsequent emails, that's, you know, we will have, all parents are being invited and not just, you know, including certain kids. This happened at East this year when the email went out about course books being given and I asked my daughter every day, did you get this? Guidance is coming in, you know, where's the guidance? And then I found out, I started asking other parents and none of these other parents got it either. So I emailed guidance, but my email gets forwarded and if you remember the special ed audit, Mr. Meyer and Ms. Randall were on the school board at that time where silos were being discussed. So my email gets forwarded to special ed. Like why can't guidance give me a course catalog? You know, anybody should be able to get that parent or that child and hear about the new courses. I knew about the new sports and marketing only because I pay attention to what's going on in the schools and I knew my daughter would want to know about that. And as I heard, other kids weren't included in that, the message it gives to parents is that we have lower expectations for your kids. So no one's going to come in and talk to them about their options. That's not right. Everybody needs to be included in these types of conversations. And one of the last recommendations or suggestions I have is looking at where are we segregating kids right now? And I'm specifically talking about students with disabilities. And can we look at something different and specifically one of the areas, and I only learned about this because it came across my desk professionally at work with high schools in Minnesota and having more inclusive FIED classes. So example, my daughter was two staff for four kids, second semester in FIED and the regular ed FIED was happening at the same time and she's like salivating, wanting to get in there and be with those kids, but she's in a segregated, separate classroom. And then I learn about what's happening in Minnesota schools and I knew this wasn't happening in our district because I, I talked to the, our FIED teacher and I will put those people that do adaptive FIED up against anyone. They're, they're creative, good people, all of our staff are. But we need a paradigm shift with how we look at it. Instead of me being told it's not safe for my daughter to be in the regular ed gym class, let's look at doing it differently and bringing the regular ed kids into adaptive PE and having a unified class. This is happening other places only because whenever I hear of a good idea, who do I call usually? DPI. And I connected with Dr. Sally Jones, who's in charge of FIED wellness and asked her to send out to districts across the state, who's doing this? What I was seeing in Minnesota. And she forwarded emails back and I got an email back from Dr. Timison from UW-Lacrosse saying, there should be no district that isn't doing this type of inclusionary programming when it comes to FIED. And so I just think that parents do have ideas and we can work on things and we see things that can really be more inclusionary, simple things. Because next year I expect somebody's coming in and telling my child what the classes are and she's being given a book and it doesn't have to go to special ed to do. She should be included and should all of our students with disabilities. So please make sure when we think about inclusion that we talk about it in terms of all minority groups and that it's on paper too, so that there is equity across the board for all of our kids. And as always, people can call me for perspective, it's, it's my, you know, my opinion on things, but as I talk to other parents and as I see little patterns and how we can make things better, we can, but it has, we all have to be at the table and I do firmly agree, parents need to be part of that. Thank you.
You're going to say it's less than 25 for your, your mom ripping on you? Just, never mind, go ahead.
Okay. All right. Josh Rea, 12148, metal cord, 53222. All righty. Thank you very much for the, everything. That was, that was cool, even though I probably almost fell asleep. Anyway, so I, I realize that it's more, at least the culture thing that you were just recently doing is more about staff, but because I'm a student or I was, at least in this district, I'm going to go from that perspective. So for the signs, they say like we accept and, yeah, that sign. So I kind of think that has to do with like the iceberg and the culture versus climate thing, kind of with the flower garden, except because I'm a Lord of the Rings geek, I'm going to go with that, except with the hobbit. Mom, stop laughing, gosh. Okay. Yeah, I just watched it yesterday, well, part of it. So think with me, if you watched it, second hobbit movie, we're talking towards the beginning of the movie, what's his face? Bilbo. They're in Merkwood, he climbs to the top and he gets to the top, he's like, his eyes go boom and there's like blue butterflies everywhere, sun's out, everything's nice, everything looks gorgeous, he can see the Lonely Mountain in the distance, he sees the river, he sees the lake, he's like, oh my goodness, I know where we need to go and he's like, wow, this is pretty. And then he hears stuff down below, he's like, uh-oh. So then he goes down and he looks down, it's dark, there's spider webs everywhere because, you know, the giant spiders and those are, those are weird, but regardless, the whole forest is sick and poisoned, but then the top is like pretty. So that kind of has to do with like the whole climate and culture thing. And I think from a student perspective, especially a student of color, that's what a lot of students kind of see or may think, that people may see it as this beautiful blue butterflies and sunset picturesque picture, but in the, what it actually is, what they actually experience is sick and disgusting because, you know, stuff happens that they don't like. They can't trust teachers, there are racial slurs tossed around too absent-mindedly and they just don't feel extremely welcome, which is unfortunate and it really does suck, I guess. So, yeah, I just hope that we can really work to include all students and with the staff because many students of color really hang on tight to teachers of color. And especially recently at Tulsa West where I was at when, after Ms. Liston left and then Ms. Turquoise left, students were really hurting because they hung on to those teachers, well, staff. And then they're gone and then it's like, who do we have? And now especially after Ms. Kirschman and Mr. Borski, who were the BSU leaders, will not be returning, then all the students are like, who do we have now? So I just hope that the board can be working hard to really make sure that our students feel welcomed and safe and the same for the teachers because they're just as important as the students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm standing at my tippy toes, Barb Grady, 1859 North 68th Street, 53213. Just really brief, what he just said struck a chord. Madison Elementary won't be the same without Lori Lester. The students at Madison Elementary need her and so does the staff. I'm really worried for next year. I'm also questioning how hiring goes in this district. That's about all I want to say.
Is there any additional community comments on the school culture topic? Seeing none, thank you very much. I know this is a topic that we will return to, whether it be in the boardroom or other ways, but I think it was a positive discussion and excited about the findings and solutions to come. So thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to final public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any further public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening. Again, my name is Bridget Forbes. I'm a teacher of speakers of other languages and supporter of their families here in the district. During these troubling times, I'm really here to ask the school board to consider drafting and adopting a resolution that affirms our commitment to our immigrant population. Mainly, I, I think it's, it's our time to speak up and it's our duty to speak up so we can be leaders in putting pressure on our elected officials to reunite children with their families. Additionally, I think we're going to need resources in order to thoroughly educate our staff about our students' rights when it comes to their immigrant when it comes to their immigration status. There have been a lot of falsehoods that have been spread, even from the Secretary of Education. And we need to clear those up so that we can get out ahead of any serious issues that our students and their families may face. So, specifically, I'd like the school board to have a resolution where we're ensuring that staff know that the immigration status of students and their families is never to be inquired. And if gathered inadvertently, is never to be shared with one another or via communications. And that we need to prepare staff for an uptick in bullying and intimidation around either actual status or perceptions of status because of a student's race, ethnicity, or language that they speak. Additionally, I would like our school board to prepare specific individuals at each building so that if families do come to the school looking for resources to protect their families and themselves, that there is somebody who has that detailed and specific knowledge about their rights and the resources about what to do should ICE come to their building. So, I really urge us, I think we are, we are the pillar in the community to advocate for the right of the child. And it's our obligation to look out for our students, particularly the ones that are most vulnerable in this current climate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I volunteer for such an activity. We'll figure it out.
Is there any additional public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn into an in-service on board communications as this is a working session. The board, no public comment will be entertained at this session. Moving, Mr. Domann.
Second.
Segmented by Ms. Fraley. We can call it off.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. Bye, Connie. Welcome. Listen, we are adjourned to the in-service. We'll come back in a couple minutes.